And thus we'll get lots done.
Okay, morning, we'll get started. So we'll call our special meeting, the Finance Committee, to order. Disclosure of any pecuniary interests and general nature thereof. Any announcements? Review of items not listed on the agenda? So we'll go straight into the budget meetings. Just to... Just as an idea of the sequence, if you don't have the notes that Donna's put out, so we'll do BIA this morning. Then we'll be going in camera at about 9:30, for as long as that takes. Probably reconvene again at...whenever it ends, but we're thinking we've got...I told Philly might as well leave for a bit, so we told him to come back about 10:15. See if the timing works out okay. And that time we'll get into fire, and then we'll make our through the rest. So there's Clerk's Department, Cemetery, Development Services, Library, and then we've got some that we...as Donna coined them, the filler budgets, and then we didn't get to the CAO's office. So we'll get through as many as we can, which just means less that we'll have to do when we come back in January. Okay?
Sounds good.
Good. Pardon me? Lots of help. So page eighty-one in the orange is the BIA budget. What we've done in the past, just so you know what's gone on, and I don't think yours will be any challenge at all, but we just go through the operating budget, then we go through the capital, and then if you have anything on the consideration list, I don't think it... And then typically what we do is just give you an opportunity to give any kind of narrative at the beginning, sort of big picture of you. I didn't...no, don't feel bad if you don't have it, and I didn't give you any warning on that. Okay, sorry, go ahead.
Welcome to the team. We haven't had you in yet. So Amy's brand new, obviously not to town, because we all know her. But what the experience that you've gained in other places, I think, will be a great asset to us and to the board.
Thank you.
And I sat in on a portion of your meeting, and your new team has so much energy. So your job for the...in this case will be...
Rein them in.
Which is probably different than what you've done in the past. So anyway, good luck, I'm excited about your team.
Thank you. Well, perfect. Well, as Dave said, I am the brand-new facilitator for the BIA. I'm really excited about it, I know our group is really excited as well. It was just...it was odd timing with Christmas, everybody's really busy right now. I have a huge list for everybody in January, so we are ready to get going. In terms of the budget, I think most of...from what I can tell and what I've been told through others, most of our aligned items are generally remaining about the same as we've had in the past with those pieces. We do have a few plans and things that we're thinking about that will sort of come through into the year, and we really want to take a look. This is a good opportunity for us as a new group of people. I will not use the phrases that Dave mentioned, but as a new group to look at, really look at our expenses and look where we are spending money, where we can change and maybe bring things lower and take a look at them to see what has been done and what we can make improvements on. So we have some plans for that as well, so to take a hard look at that. I don't know, where would you like me to go next? Walk me through it.
Well, are there any questions? I trust everybody's had a chance to look through the page eighty-one in advance. Is there anything in there that's jumping out at you? Yeah, go ahead, Pam.
First of all, sorry for being late, I got held up in Goodwood. Anyways, the question I have is the promotion. It was very low this year. Sorry if I missed something on that one.
You didn't. I probably did, but you didn't.
No, because I know that what was... planned, is there anything that you know about?
I think some of it came down to with the timing, with the change of facilitator, with the change of chair. We didn't really get a Christmas program off the ground this year, just with the timing, with everyone coming in, so there was probably some money allocated towards that that we didn't spend. And I don't know that they did as many events as they wanted to or promotions for things like that. So what I was just saying before you came in, Pam, that we really want to...we're going to take a look at all of these expenses and see...
Yeah.
Christina and I are going to sit down and take a look and see where we have spent money and where we could put more money in, knowing that we have it available. I think some...I don't know if that was always shared with the group, what was available to be used, so that's something we want to make sure that the group knows ongoing, that we have the funds to do those types of things.
And it goes well with special events. There's a big jump for the budgets for 2019 to what it really has. Again, is that the possibility which you're new, so? Just, you know, maybe planning for some other special events?
It...I believe it is. My guess would be, and I'd have to go back and take a look, I would think we...I know we had some money allocated to Win This Space, which we are talking about bringing back again, so I would expect that would fall under that piece. And I know we have some big plans in the works for a big...we want to do a big Christmas market next year, so we wanted to put a little bit more money towards that piece as well. We don't know what it looks like yet, but we really want to have sort of a big splashy piece, get people to come to town, so there's probably some money allocated in that piece for that.
Okay. Please remind, keep in close contact with tourism, because there might be...
Oh, I've met every...I've been talking to everybody.
Okay, good. No, because that will be very important, that we can support each other.
Absolutely.
For...to be able to draw people into...
We want to start planning that in February.
Perfect.
I said March, and then they said February, which would surprise me as an event planner. I thought I was being extra cautious in saying March, but Christina says February, we'll get talking about that, so they really want to make it big, so.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Hyatt?
Thank you, welcome again.
Thank you.
You have two new councilors sitting on there, so I'm sure they will do a great job. Just to give you a little bit of history, we had money in the promotion budget previously, and they moved that into special events, I'm sure you know that.
Yes.
And I'm glad you mentioned the Christmas market, because that's something that's coming forward this year. So that's why you see that decrease in one and an increase in the other, they've just kind of reallocated it rather than just have it sitting in outer space.
In limbo.
So, yeah, that's why that number changes. But if you look at the budget year over year, it really hasn't changed, there's no increase in the levy, so I think from our perspective as council, that's what we're more accountable for, rather than where BIA spends it. It's really up to the board to decide where that money goes.
Right. Thank you.
Mayor Burton?
Thanks, Bruce. I was walking downtown the other day, the lights in the trees seem to be getting...more of them seem to be out. Have we taken a look?
We have been looking at them. I think the problem is that they are...that the units are self-contained, so anybody can walk by and unplug them. So we're trying to keep an eye on that. I think what we would like to do next year is look at if we have to replace any of them and getting maybe a contract for somebody to be looking at that more regularly, rather than, you know, us walking, you know, every couple of days, someone to watch that. It is certainly on the radar, for sure. I noticed it when I was driving through the other day, I'm like, I just, you know, checked a bunch of them, and they were all working, and then, yeah. So I don't know if someone's just having fun at our expense, or what's happening, but...
Yeah, and maybe we should look at hardwiring some of them, so they can't be unplugged quite as easily.
That's probably a good idea as well. I'll definitely take that suggestion to the board.
Nice. Okay.
Any other...
A couple of points, just out of interest for council. Amy is on contract. In the past, the way it used to work is they were an independent operator, working for the BIA. We've run in...not we, but we have to be very careful on the way we handle contracts, and even though the BIA is an extension of council, what we've done is we've actually made Amy a contract employee of the township. So the township will be overseeing Amy's employment and doing deductions and all the right things that need to happen, rather than having her as an independent operator. So we've got to get that contract signed, it's ready to go, on my end, so on your end.
I just keep working.
Yep. And then the other thing is I...when we talked about Win This Space last year, we talked about whether or not they should be using some of their money and applying for a RED grant in order to get money, but what I understand is the province is basically canceling the RED grants, so there's going to be no more rural economic development funding available in the short term. And it's probably all just part of that conservative government trying to rein things in. Just something to keep in mind, so there really isn't any other funding opportunity for Win This Space. You'll be basically on your own, just so you're aware. Thank you.
Other questions?
Amy, that was the...
Sorry, just one more thing for Amy. Amy, we were in meetings with, and Pam mentioned tourism, and I know you know Mike Whiston fairly well, too. So Central Counties is receiving a little bit of a cut, and I don't know if they're...you're looking to work with them a little more, but if the BIA is looking to do something with them, they should probably talk to them sooner rather than later.
I know they were on the list of people we wanted to sort of get together with and see what was happening, so I'll definitely mention that to...
And my understanding is that their timeline is March for getting applications out for how they will support things, but I still think it'd be prudent to get ahead in the list, so that you're at the front of the line versus down the list, and if there's something that the BIA really wants from them, to get there fast and make sure that that happens.
Thank you for that information. Everything happens really fast, as I'm finding out.
Okay, thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
That was by far the fastest one we've done. Thanks. Counselor, what I'm thinking we can take advantage of is let's do some squeeze-ins here. So one that we missed in the last session was health and safety. So if you're okay, we'll just carry on and knock that one off, too. So it's page...page eighty-five in the orange. Ingrid, are you okay to speak to this one?
I wasn't planning on it, but okay. I can take any questions, you're probably...but if I was to guess, you probably want to know a little bit more about what's in training. And there's a number...every time we bring new employees on, there's obvious an element of training, WMS training, health and safety training, that's the kind of thing. Then you'll see a spike the following year, and I believe that's because we need to...because we rotate all of our staff through the Health and Safety Committee, we have one joint Health and Safety Committee. We actually have approval from the Ministry of Labor instead of...we used to have four committees. We actually applied to the ministry probably about six years ago to have one joint Occupational Health and Safety Committee, which is unusual, but we did get approval on it. Because we rotate our staff through, we feel that all of our staff have to take a turn of at least two years on the Health and Safety Committee. Not everybody's excited about it, but you know what, it doesn't really matter. And they have to all...we have them all get certified, so every member...eventually what will happen is the corporation's going to basically have a staff that are all fully certified in health and safety, which I think is the right thing to do, that then you have a really good system of fallback. The wage portion is a portion of Carolyn's salary. Carolyn manages the Exbridge Pool and does health and safety one day a week, and she looks after all the corporate health and safety, including accident investigation and everything else, rather than us having a full-time health and safety coordinator. It's something she likes to do. She's the only one that I can honestly say loves writing policies for health and safety. There's something wrong with her, but it works. And there's a small amount in there for consulting, that's just in the event that we need it, and sometimes you do need it. And then they have a wellness program as well. They do things like Employee Skating Day, Golf Day, and it's just a little bit of money that they use just to bring the staff together in a spirit of health and safety and wellness. Any questions?
What's the wellness...the last item is wellness? What does that consist of?
That would be like an employee golf. They go one...there's one day usually a year, they go to Foxbridge, and there's just a little bit of that money's used just to help subsidize the event. Everybody still pays a little bit. We do skating event at the arena, which is a family skating event, and the staff can actually bring their families with them. Just little things to try and promote. They use some of that money for prizes, because Carolyn likes to do health and safety competitions. They do...what's that? The bingo, health and safety bingo. Anyway, it's a small program, but it actually does really well, and we're really pleased with it.
Awesome. Ingrid, since you're on a roll, unless anybody has any other questions about that one? How do you feel about rolling right into the CAO one that we didn't get to? Page six.
I can talk you...walk you through this. The salaries and wages picks up a portion of...picks up administration support for the CAO mayor and council, which is part of Colleen's salary is in there, and then the benefit portion, obviously, as well. The telephone is basically cellphone. Mileage is a mileage amount that comes to that position. Membership, basically, is things like Municipal World, my O M M A, Member, AMCTO membership, those are the kind of things that are covered by that. Insurance is just an amount that's been put on to the CAO budget. There's no rhyme or reason to it, only that there's a set amount for insurance, and it basically gets allocated. If my insurance was reduced, it would end up popping up somewhere else, so it's just there as a number, and maybe they think I'm high-risk, but it looks like we actually...yeah, we use some of it. Conferences and training, two thousand. I cut it back a little bit only because I didn't actually use it in 2018. I may go somewhere in 2019, we'll see. And then consultants in legal, it's just, I think, also just a standard amount to cover off anything that might be in conjunction with me.
One thing I was...when we went through this pre-budget meetings, was recognizing we're not certain yet about your retirement. Bringing somebody else in could have an effect on that wage level in two different ways. One, it could be less, depending on the recruiting process. The other part would be, I'm a fan of overlap, so I don't know how long that would be and how that would work with your plans, but just as a date, if you came in...if you were leaving in, I'll just make up, June, it'd be nice if this person came in in April to help pull some of that through osmosis, some of your knowledge into them. So just wondering if...does that need to be reflected in there, or just open it up for comments about that transition period that we're likely to face sometime this year, if that's what you choose to do?
Well, the plan is probably sometime this year. The question is when, that's the bigger question, right?
Well, and so regardless of when it is, even if it was November, we'd still have your salary right through to November, it's just there would...my thinking is there would be two months of overlap whenever that happens. Whether two months is the right amount is kind of a standard thing to look at. Now, my understanding at the region, when they replaced the CAO, it was one came in the front door, as the other went at the back door. I'm not sure if that's the best way or what the logic was to it, but...so I'm just wondering if we need to recognize that and build in a couple months of double salary?
Well, and that's the problem, there's two schools of thought on it, right? Some people will say that there's a lot of knowledge walking out of the door, and then other people will say that it's an opportunity for somebody else to come in and do it the way they want to do it, right? The only other part of that discussion, too, I think, and where it shows up is whether or not you're going to need to use a recruiter to hire somebody, because that's another part of it, and I think recruitment these days is complicated. And I can say that you want somebody that can maybe go out and help you find somebody that you want. Sometimes it's going through the process of doing the reference checking and those kind of things, but there's a lot of people that seem to be moving from municipality to municipality, and sometimes you wonder if there's a reason for that. And the thing is, I've been here for a very long time, and it would be nice if you got somebody that you felt you could keep for, you know, ten or fifteen or twenty years and get some work done. The continuity's really good for the system, if it's constantly changing and you're revolving door on your CAO, I think sometimes it's very difficult for the staff that are working here as well, because it's constantly a shift in direction. So I would suggest you budget some money, definitely, to hire a recruiter as well.
So what about the idea of put it into the...because I think it warrants more discussion?
It does.
What if we had a motion to put it onto the budget list to include two months of overlap, and is a recruiter...would they be like ten percent of a salary?
Usually it's ten, ten to fifteen percent of the salary, yeah, in that range.
So we would need... Sorry? To do both, yeah. So could I get a motion to add forty thousand dollars to the budget list for...
Yeah, I'll give you that motion. I'll give you the motion to add forty...forty K to the budget list, but I want Donna to vet that number and make sure that that's approximately the right amount. That was...
That's a good idea.
A very, very quick calculation.
And depending on what happens, like if for some reason it doesn't happen in eighteen or nineteen, then at least you've marked it, and then it can go to 2020, just depending on what happens, right?
Okay, so let's switch it to... Yeah, that's... She's getting...we also need to budget flowers every week, to make sure we get the people today. But... Yeah, chocolate works better, okay. Donna, can we make that a reserve instead of a budget item? So put a reserve amount of forty.
So you want it being funded through reserve?
No, no, I want there to be a CAO recruitment reserve.
Yeah, yeah.
That way, there's no...we don't have to talk about this again, it's sitting there waiting for the sad day when we need it.
So what I can do is I can...
When I wake up one day and...
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah. So what I can do is I can levy for it, and if it's not sent in 2019... I can levy for it this year, or put it on the list and you guys can decide later whether to include in the 2019 budget, and if we don't spend it in 2019, we can put it in the reserve.
Excellent, that works.
For 2020.
Okay, thanks.
All in favor? Can we do that again? Just all in favor of that motion? One, two, three, four. Okay, carried. Um, Ingrid?
Gord, just curious on your thoughts on this one. Curious on your thoughts on this.
Little premature. I mean, I know we're kind of tossing the ball around and making speculation, but I don't know. I understand putting money aside for it, but I don't know if we're at that point yet where we need to. I'm sure if we need to hire a consultant or whatever, there's money in corporate that we could drag out somewhere, I would think. I'm not sure where it would come from, but...
Or you could take it from savings in the budget, too, right? I think your...the concern is that you don't have a definite...
Well, if we did...
And I can't give you a definite.
Then we can go to the levy, but we don't, and I'm not putting you on the spot or anything, I'm just saying we don't know where we're at with that yet, so...
So we'll...I mean, the points...
And from what I've heard, we're not doing well tax rate-wise.
Right, so we're not going to put this straight onto the budget, we'll put it onto the budget list, and we can have some more discussion around it.
Well, if council wants it in there, I mean, you can vote for it, but I...at this point, I don't support it.
So the motion was to add it to the budget list, and it's not just for the recruiter, it's for that...I think we should have some more discussion around whether the overlap idea is necessary or even good, it may just come right back off again. Ingrid, there was one thing on the budget list, the Six Sigma training.
I think that has to be a decision for a new CAO, whether they want to get into Six Sigma. Oshwa's gone into it, and they've found a lot of savings. We've talked before about whether or not we should do a core services review, but I'm more inclined to think that a Six Sigma...it's expensive, but to me, that seems like you may have a better benefit. Donna and I sat in with Oshwa, Oshwa CAO, and a couple other staff. They've talked about actually bringing somebody here to talk to us about that, and looking at whether or not we get some people just through the session on a yellow belt, and then we've kind of talked about whether or not that's something that may want to get started up when somebody new comes.
I agree, and there's ser...you would need...you would need everybody to be somewhat aware, and then a leader to go to the different levels of belts, yeah.
Me starting it is that I think if somebody, whoever starts it, they have to, you know, you need to have somebody you know that's going to be here for five or ten years, that's going to be able to walk everybody through and get the people certified, and it's just going to be a change in the way we look at the way we do process, and I think that's actually not a bad thing. Whether Six Sigma is the right thing, we need to look at something.
So given that it's a decision, it'll follow after the...to your point, the new CAO comes in, should we be considering moving that down to the 2020 items, rather than leave it in 2019 for discussion? By the time the person gets in here, go ahead, you did...
Yeah, I think that makes sense. You don't want to go halfway if we go Six Sigma, let's do a lot of research. Often Six Sigma would make sense for a much larger corporation. Let's make sure it makes sense for Exbridge before we budget it, and let's have a couple people do more research, talk to Oshwa, talk to people that say it's a great idea, and those that say it wasn't worth the cash flow. So let's think about 2020.
No, I was just going to say, too, like Willie and I, we were talking on Dave of this week about just even implementing a continuous improvement program or something, just something that is always continuing to take a look at process and what we're doing. Okay? Just whatever it's called, we don't know.
So do we need a motion? Debbie, do I have to have a motion to move it to 2020? Okay. Willie? All in favor? Carried. Has the motion agreed? Okay, we're good? Okay, thank you. Good, we squeezed the two in. Okay, then we'll call for recess, is that the right way to refer it? So we'll call for recess as we go in camera, probably resume again, and we'll see in the next forty-five minutes to an hour.
Yeah, I move that we go into recess, so we can... Okay.
So we still have to...
Okay.
Do you have to move it, and then to go to recess to...
So you're just recessing from budget?
You do that?
Okay, so I'll make a...I can do that? Okay, so I'll make the motion that we go into recess for the next forty-five minutes to an hour. All in favor? Carried.
Okay, and I call this special council meeting to order. Any disclosures of pecuniary interest or general natures thereof? Seeing none? Review of items not listed on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, there was an addendum that went out, and it included an addendum to the in-camera portion for a report.
Okay, thank you very much. And then, could I get a motion to go into camera? Add from Pam, seconded by Gord. Those in favor? Carried. Pam, seconded by Gord. And then Bruce, do you have a motion?
A motion...
Oh, yeah, we'll open the doors. Sure. Okay, Bruce, can you make a motion for us, please?
Yeah, Deb, can you just repeat that motion for us, please?
Under section 239-1, sub-paragraph I, that such confidential report shall be released upon finalization of negotiations for a pending property acquisition, and that a resolution in competency passed to the appropriate regional officials until such time as the report is made public.
Thank you.
Should we get a second, Deb? Todd? All those in favor?
There's a second motion, right? Okay, and who has the second motion? Okay. Bruce, do you want to do the second motion?
Yeah, if I get Deb, if you wouldn't mind just repeating the motion for me again, thank you.
That the township proceed with negotiations with the pending land acquisition for the Brock Street culvert as discussed in camera.
Um, I think we should take a short break. Sorry, folks. Oh, good for you. All right. Could you...Willie, do you want to read the confirming bylaw? Oh, with your mic on? Thanks, buddy.
That leave be granted to introduce bylaw number 2018-196, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its special meeting of December 20th, 2018, and the same be read a first and second time.
All those in favor of first and second reading? Carried, third reading?
That bylaw number 2018-196 be now read a third time, finally passed, and the mayor and clerk duly sign and seal same.
All those in favor? Carried. Okay, I'll adjourn this special council meeting, and let's take a five-minute break? Sure. I just handed them...
Gary, can I get your report, please? This one? Oh, okay, so they're all there? Okay. Um, but I need to have the notice right now.
He could be the last one because there's so much work that's done, just like I got that day only once again.
Yeah, that's what I was potentially thinking.
Okay, so I would need it, I'd need it tomorrow.
Okay.
If we not do, like, what would go in the paper in the actual for the board's corporation at day nine time?
Yeah, I mean, I... We can email the notices to you if you're comfortable with this.
That's fine, I'm good with that. Sorry, Abe, are you going to...
Are you in tomorrow? Because we'll have to get you to sign the notices.
All right.
Okay, okay. Um, I'll get Sandra and the subject. I don't know, it's always an adventure.
Yeah, I just didn't want to, I didn't want to leave without having something.
That's perfectly fine, yeah, that's perfectly fine, I think it's a wise...
All right, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, I guess we'll probably talk tomorrow. Okay, see you later.
Okay.
I can't believe it.
That's homemade.
Yeah, I can't have a photo. Lost my ankle last year, I put on about twenty pounds.
Why not?
Probably a twenty over there.
Yeah, hard and sugar.
Sure, sugar's the other. Oh, is it in there? Oh, my God. Yeah. It comes in a lot bigger than printed, I thought. I just wanted to give Mr. Burns a more handle. Who's that? Oh, it's a goat.
And there's a letter of the senator's request.
Yeah, I need to pull it up. Like, oh, something else came in anyway, so you're covering it, like, all of it.
No, I was not, he said, oh, I'm writing right, I'm writing...
No, but at the end, he prophesied everything with that.
Oh, okay.
He prophesied it, but at the end, right? Might be a problem. Right. You should have a chance to write the last name off, somebody writes you the right name off, because yes, you are. And then you give another perspective.
You get him the letter to the editor, he's drawing me.
Yeah, yeah. Which all that is, is give it air, and I keep going. Well, but that's, and that's what I haven't done. Wait, I'm sure you get more than enough stuff to fire him, and that's what... But he's also, I said to him, his jaw is a contr... He is, he's a controversial writer, he gives out his jaw. I agree, I agree, but, you know, he's been doing it for a couple of years, trying out stuff.
He was short of ammo that month.
Well, I laughed at the effect when they all came in tired, like, oh, you all felt that? Like, oh, guys, come on. Giving into one article. Must take a lot more than that, you have to be...
That's just how you go to work, right?
I agree. Yeah, I do.
And it has nothing to do with what he said.
No. Only wear, of course, I only wear tie. No. Oh, my, it is big, isn't it? It didn't look that big on the computer when I sent it. You have what? I like Roger, I like Roger.
They're just calling to me.
It's good enough for me. Okay, I'm going to recall to order the special meeting in the finance committee. Uh, thank you for your patience while we, when you knew that wasn't going to be forty-five minutes. Um, so, we'll just start again, and we'll go straight into the fire department, Phil, whenever you're ready. Page, well, the summary, you're on the gray pages, folks, and you're on, yeah, fifteen goes, you'll... We'll see. So, what we've done, Phil, in the back, I am not sure, everybody else has heard this speech a few times, but we've gone through, you know, talk big picture, if you like, just kind of conceptualize. Then, we go through the operating budget. I've already told council that we've had pre-budget meetings, we've gone through a lot of detail. Um, but of course, they're entitled to ask any questions about any of the lines. We know that year-to-date figures may still have some numbers outstanding still to come in on it. Um, after we've gone through the operating budget, then we move into capital. And then, after capital, we talk about on the consideration list. With that, I'll throw it over to you, Phil.
I have one question. Have you dealt with the report from Donna and myself? Is that coming up, or where is that fitting in? Okay, sure. So, these, uh, with everything you've mentioned so far, this just advised you that this operating budget, we'll start with the operating budget. We just, basically, everything we've done this year in terms of operating is just a continuance of our current standard of, uh, service, reflecting on, we did, Donna and I went back, uh, with the assistance of our admin staff at the fire station, went back ten years and looked at averages for ten years on all these separate expenditures. We are, in 2018, certainly going to be over our budget on firefighting costs. Um, and that is largely due to, in the first half of the year, we had a number of incidents that were labor and hour extensive, specifically structural fires. Things have calmed down in the second half of the year. So, these numbers are just, all of them are reflection of what our actuals have been, uh, in the past year immediately, and in average going back over ten years. And so, I believe they're a realistic forecast of what's going to be happening in nineteen and twenty. So, the items that you may have already dealt with, with other, uh, with other departments in terms of, uh, staff expenses and utilities and things like that, those numbers are predetermined for us, so there's no change there. We had some reductions, projected hopeful reductions, and some things, um, during the first part of seventeen, we were operating the two departments together, and now we have, Donna's been able to pull, the two fire stations, the old and the new, together. Donna's been able to pull all those numbers out separately, so now I think we have an accurate projection for where we're going operationally, utility-wise. And, uh, I think this should be, this is a realistic assessment of what we're going to have in nineteen and twenty.
All I've done is the same thing you're doing, just look around, see if there's any questions. If not, we're going to try not to roll back, so, you know, if anybody needs extra time to look at anything before we move to the next one, we just don't want to have one train of thought going to another page, and then, fine, we're going back. So, if everybody's good with that page, then we'll move on. Fair enough to ask if you need more time.
All good? So, that's operating, everybody's, okay? You want to go line by line through the budget, or...
Does anybody have anything to... Right, yeah.
Well, those comments apply to everything, so, I mean, if you want to, I can...
Maybe just take a minute.
Okay.
Well, no. It's an important budget, but...
Straight here?
Sure. You, Gord, if you don't mind? Yeah, okay, let's do that. Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead?
Yep.
Just on training, Phil, you've got, is it all the training under the admin category, or is it just...
No, there's training, there's, uh, training, there's a separate training, um, a separate training, uh, and recruitment section at the end on page twenty, your tab twenty-one on the gray pages. So, that's, uh, yeah, essentially, that is training for admin, if it's in the admin section, or...
So, that's not the recruit training, right?
No, recruit training is completely separate.
That's under training and recruitment, right?
Yes.
Are there plans for new recruits for 2019?
We, but, well, right presently, we are at a full complement, so that, uh, which we've been fortunate throughout, not throughout, only since July of 2018, we've had a full complement. Uh, as of now, I have one resignation for the new year, will be one under, and, uh, there's a couple of our members who have indicated that they may not be able to, uh, maintain their commitment to department throughout that time. We don't typically recruit less than four vacancies, just because the additional cost of staff in the cover, they have to have support staff there to run through the evolutions.
Yep.
Uh, but more than six becomes cost prohibitive because we have to have additional staff or supervision when they're training. So, right now, there is no expectation that we'll be recruiting, but I can see that there might be a potential by the summer that we would have to.
It's just, obviously, we just went through a new recruit process in the last couple of years.
We've hired, yeah, so we did our full recruitment in 2017. We had two classes, a class of six in seventeen and a class of five in eighteen.
Right.
And that finally brought us up to our full complement. It's another concern, moving forward, that, uh, especially with a couple of the retirements we've had, more than fifty percent of our, uh, staff are less than five years of service.
So, if you're foreseeing these retirements or people moving away or whatever their reasons are, would you be opening up again to a new recruitment process?
We would have to, we exhausted our list, we would have to do a complete recruitment.
So, that's why your budget is basically consistent across for sixty-six hundred?
Yes, yep.
For, uh, for the new process when that comes online?
Yeah, so there's, uh, so that's a multi-part process. We have started with, uh, there's no essential cost to that. We do an open house in advance to advertise in advance and do a orientation night to make sure that people who, to try and reach out, so we have a better, uh, a better pool to pick from, as well as people who might think that they would be, uh, suitable as volunteer firefighter, they can see if they are able to meet the commitment, or perhaps they're not, uh, don't have the qualifications to apply. But then, we go through an exam process, we have a third party, we have to pay for that exam, it's written and proctored, uh, elsewhere, and then, uh...
Just for the new counselors, could you give them a scope on what that process timelines are, and the day you start to, you actually have a capable firefighter on the department?
Well, until they're, uh, it's more than six months before, from the, uh, from the application date to when they can actually ride in a truck, and then they can only do certain things until they, uh, have finished other training on the job. So, we have a, um, you know, see it in, see reflected in the firefighting hours for training. Firefighters would take on, have to meet the National Fire Protection Association standard for qualifications, NFPA thousand and one, level one and level two. Uh, many of our candidates that come from community colleges already have that standard. If they don't, when they hire, in this case, we have three in our most recent class that don't, then we pay for them to go to, uh, either the Fire College or the Eastern Ontario Fire Training Academy. We're a partner there as well. So, we have three of our current recruits going there, uh, throughout January to June. It's about, I want to say it's about a twenty-six weekend course, so it's the kind of commitment that we're looking for people to get on. So, they start with the applicant, with the open house, we advertise in the local papers, internet, or at least Facebook, Twitter locally, they obviously have to be local to be a volunteer here. We have an open house to attract additional candidates who might be interested in getting some more information. We invite them to apply, we call the applications to make sure they meet the minimum standard. We invite the applicants to write an aptitude exam. We had about forty-five write the last time. And then, exams are written, those that are successful in the exam get invited back, uh, for an interview. And then, from there, we proceed with the security checks and vulnerable sector checks, vulnerable sector checks, because they'll be working with kids and seniors. Uh, and ultimately, if they get through all that, they're sent to York University for a fitness exam and medical. And if they pass through that, that there's a potential for a job offer if there's a vacancy. I should say that the whole cost of the, uh, other than the cost of the exam, which we proctor, all the other costs are the costs of the candidate, York University, the driver's abstract and all that kind of stuff. And then, again, if we have to do additional training, once they come on, we bear that cost. So, that, either they have a choice, if they have the ability to get time off their work or whatever to, uh, attend the Fire College, they can go through a really compressed course at the Fire College to become certified. But Fire College courses typically are being booked a year or two in advance. And, uh, we're requesting that before their probation is finished, one year, that the candidate meets the firefighter qualification standard.
So, just per council's information, it's quite a convoluted thorough process, I guess, to make sure that they are the candidates that we want, right?
Yes, and this exam, this last time, we incorporated a piece of the exam, a separate set of questions to identify fit on the team and things like that, commitment to the organization, as well as just their aptitude for being a firefighter. Actually, we... Actually, we think that was very good, we got some excellent candidates this time. Yeah, we did really well the last time. Great, thanks, Phil.
Sorry, is there psychological testing done as well?
Uh, no, not like a separate psychological exam, no, just, just fit. It is available, it is possible. Yeah. I can speak to you if, about that, if you like. One of the things that, sometimes those exam points, the people you have aren't really considered good candidates, even the ones that are excellent candidates, excellent employees and performers wouldn't necessarily do well in that psychological exam.
Yeah, and it's more from a mental health standpoint, right? Where they're coming into this, into this career with solid mental health.
Right, so we have a robust wellness program in terms of mental health with, so we utilize the R2MR program, Road to Mental Ruddiness. It's a, it's a combination program, it's used by the Canadian military and the Ontario Association of Fire Chiefs, and it's administered through the Canadian Association, Canadian Mental Health Association, CM, anyway. It's their, they have the control over the program and the administration of the program, and it can be delivered by fire staff in the industry. We don't have any instructors of our own. So that's a program that every firefighter has to go undertake, it's only a half-day program. And then our officers and acting officers take the full day supervisor program related to that. And then we have additional resources with, through the EAP, through the Durham Regional Fire Chiefs have a program with the Durham Mental Health Program and stuff like that. But that's all aftercare, yeah.
I'm going to jump up to page twenty with the fire hall maintenance supplies. I think in your narrative at the beginning, Phil, you were talking about how we've kind of combined or now don't have the issue of two fire halls. Is the seventy-two hundred still necessary on maintenance? Because I'm assuming that it was kind of-
So that's just, that's not one item, that's also for our janitor and things like that. There's a number of items grouped together in that specific group, so I can, let me pull that in for you.
I mean, you don't have to dive into the details, as much as the question being, should it be that high if we're not dealing with two facilities now?
So we've actually come down from our seven, our, you can see what our seventeen and eighteen budget were, was actually, so the actual seventeen was slightly over. And again, in eighteen, we're just trending a bit over, over on that as well. So I think about seventy-two is the number that we, eighteen, we've been in the one station for the full year. Those are real true numbers.
Okay, okay. And then on the same page, can we just go down? I get that the front of the station in particular has to be spotless for safety, trucks coming and going, I suppose behind as well. Eighty-five hundred? I'm just comparing that to some of our previous reviews where we did Goodwood and Saffra, they're smaller lots, but they're typically in the thirty-five hundred range.
So we participate in the tender program, and our station is lumped together with a number of other facilities the township tenders for, and so that's the actual price?
So that's-
That's not the, so it's for snow removal?
Right.
Yeah, so we don't actually manage the snow removal ourselves, that's part of the township tender for parking lots and things like that.
So it's just allocated to them?
No, that's their charge.
That's our charge for the, for what they do.
Wow. Interesting, because it's more than double what the halls are. So I wonder if we're paying, and maybe it's another level of service that has to be at a fire station with the salt, the level of, I don't know.
It's the same, it's the same contract. It's a big parking lot, but there's a driveway, there's sidewalks, one sidewalk, and they salt. But it's the same, it's actually divided up in the same contract as here at the municipal office. It's the same facility piece.
Would that be, I just wouldn't mind following up a bit more on it, not-
It'd be a priority price, too, based on, they would be done well before the others.
I, I would, I'll give you, I will grant you it's supposed to be.
They're tendered, right?
Yeah, so it's locked in, anyway.
And they did go up, and they're not all done by the same people?
Okay, right. So it's been tendered and set in, okay. And then further down, and we'll get into the discussion on the capital side about the truck and then the replacement of chief's vehicle. Just to put that in context, we may have to come back to this page, because there's sixty-three hundred continuing to be budgeted for maintenance of the car, and peeking into the capital budget, it's car seventy-one that's being replaced.
That's, that's the total.
So that's the, like, operating, that's gas and service and operating and everything, yeah. So it's going to stay there regardless, new vehicle, now?
Correct.
Okay, fair enough, all right, thank you.
Just on that, you'll note there's two pump seven threes, the old pump seven three was a Rosenbauer truck that we were able to sell earlier this year. And it was maintenance, it was a heavy burden maintenance-wise to keep it on the road, and that's the, that's the number you see reflected in the 2017 budget. And it was a small amount there as well. Anyway, so it's gone, and the rest of the trucks are back to the regular maintenance schedule.
Everybody feel they've had enough time to go through the operating budget? Okay, we will switch up to capital.
I don't know, are you interested in, just an update on what the capital for 2018, is what we're going along, or just not interested in that this time?
Might help just to provide some context, because we've had such long discussions, in-depth discussions, maybe just summarize for folks.
We had a number, a small number of projects for 2018. But just to give you an indication, the next-gen radio system was a placeholder, twenty thousand dollars, because it was scheduled to have an upgrade this year, and that has not happened, so that money is unspent, that entire twenty thousand at this time. Had a water softener installed at the station, came, is now complete. It was just under the budget that we allotted. Traffic preemption for one intersection is now complete, and it's already broken, so they have a service call in to fix that, it also came in just under budget. Positive pressure ventilation fans, that was, that's an operational thing for a battery fan and an electric fan, eight thousand allotted for that, also complete, under budget. Thermal imaging cameras are all three of them, I was, I reported to council earlier this year on the purchase of those, because of the value, that was thirty thousand allocated, and it came in at twenty-seven. We did a joint purchase with Skougog and Brock Fire Department for face-fit testing for N95 particulate mask and self-contained breathing apparatus mask. That project is now complete, and in fact, our firefighters are all now fit-tested again, and we continue to do that annually now in-house, rather than doing it annually for the third party coming in. Got some water rescue equipment just arrived in time for the water rescue season. That's now complete. And exterior lighting in the parking lot, project, twenty-five hundred budgeted for that. There's actual parts for that, it's a difficult procedure to get the parts for that, but they were only about three hundred and fifty dollars for the parts, and it's still waiting for the invoice and the labor for the electrician to install them, but that is complete. And then the trees, the trees were deferred to the parks budget, but that project is also complete at the station. So everything, anticipate everything will be done by the end of the year. And then capital budget, on page twenty-eight, you see the overall ten-year capital plan there for the fire station, fire department. Some, the project at the fire station regarding the water main is carryover from 2018, and it's continuing, still meetings to go with the region, at the shared cost with the region, and they're proceeding with their analysis of the mains there. That will not be done before the end of the year, obviously. And then we have some work of our own to do to follow up on their information. The third item there is the funding of the fire apparatus and the apparatus reserve, and we'll speak to that in detail with the report that the treasurer and myself have put forward. Fire equipment is, those are itemized, those are items that are itemized in the, on page twenty-nine of your tab in the gray pages, so just to give you some insight into that. We have a standing project annually, personal protective equipment, that's to replace items that are either life, so they have a life cycle, fire protective equipment, but it's a hard, there's a standard about ten years of replacing the gear, whether it's, typically gear gets worn out or destroyed before its life cycle, but you could possibly get to the end of a ten-year life cycle with something that's still functional, but it doesn't meet the safety standard. So we have allotted fifteen thousand dollars annually to replace things like fire helmets and boots and bunker gear and things like that, gloves, fire protective hoods. The fire apparatus reserve, the number's there, we can talk to that in detail. The water main is two hundred and eighty thousand, which we are splitting the cost with the region. As I just mentioned, it's a carryover from 2018, and that project is continuing. So the rest of the, there's been an actual reduction in some of it from previous years in the overall fire equipment budget, when it's grouped together here. But three items in particular that we need to look at is a washing machine, a domestic wash, is a domestic washer for the station. It was a consideration during the construction of the station, and it was not, it was deleted from the project. And the purpose is twofold here. We can get an industrial washing machine that washes our own bunker gear. The bunker gear has to be washed after every call. Reason for that is that's the, basically, the health and safety of firefighters that are wearing the gear, it's well-known that smoke and particulate matter is a, is a direct line cause to cancers, and that stuff has to be removed from their gear after a fire. So what we have been doing is sending our stuff out to a third party, includes an inspection of the gear and the vapor barrier, so that we know that it's working properly. And the turnaround time for that is about, is usually three days. If it goes out today, it'll be back the day after tomorrow. We could buy an industrial machine and do that ourselves, considerably more than five thousand dollars. But the gear would still be at the service for three days, and we'd have to have somebody inside working at the station to manage the laundry, and it's expensive to have a firefighter there managing laundry. So we believe we'll continue with the contracting that service out. What we don't have is a gear washing machine to manage the clothes that the firefighters are wearing under their bunker gear, which does as well get contaminated. And it's best practice that people not take contaminated clothing home and put it in the washing machine with the rest of their family's clothes. And this would be to clean their, just to wash their clothes in the station, and they wouldn't be taking that kind of material home. I don't know for sure yet, do we even have a space that can economically be done to include, like, there has to be drain work and water supply work to make a washing machine fit in there? But, so that's what that item is for. Semi-automatic defibrillator, that's the defib that we care, we have two we carry on our frontline apparatus now. We'd like to have one on our third apparatus, because it, trucks attend different calls at different times. In addition to that, it would be good if we could have one on every scene when our firefighters are working. It's common, a common ailment for firefighters, particularly in the length, into the ends, towards the end of the cure, firefighters have heart attacks on scenes, and we'd like to be able to protect our own on the scene with every opportunity. We applied previously this year for a grant for that amount of money, and we were turned down, so putting it forward now in, in this budget. Also wanted to have the prospect of having a spare when a machine is out of service for repair or damaged. But in fact, the, we are part of the base hospital program, and they do have a loaner program for spare if we have one out of service. So this is really only perfectly to have one on every front-run apparatus. And firefighting equipment is lumped together, it's general stuff that we buy during the course of the year gets damaged or broken, axe handles, light bulbs, extension cords, and stuff like that, that pointed out that this year, we purchased some water rescue equipment for, that we didn't currently have. Miscellaneous things that get broken and the wear and tear of the, of the operation. Computer equipment and software is, is a scheduled replacement lifecycle, some of the software that we have, the fire reporting software that we have, training software, we are required, not required to do it in computer format, but we are required to report out to the province on our activities during the course of our incidents, and we use the FirePro program. And that's essentially a provision for replacement of that when it comes due in 2021. The radio system, I mentioned that already, that we, in the update from last year, we, in 2018, we had money scheduled for that upgrade, and it has not happened yet, so it's not likely to happen. We had another twenty thousand scheduled in 2020. The fire apparatus, 2018 reflected the tanker and the rescue truck, which have been purchased. Twenty nineteen is a new small vehicle. And then in 2020, you see the lines there for the pumper replacement, or the pumper replacement. Twenty twenty-one is a refurbishment of an older truck to extend its life by another eight years. And 2022 is replacement of a tanker, scheduled replacement of- Two years old in 2022. The SCBA is five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we've been pushing that out for three years now. In 2018, the standard for SCBA, which is self-contained breathing apparatus, changed for safety reasons and to include a one-hour minimum air cylinder. We've been using the same style of apparatus for more than thirty-two years now. It does not meet the current safety standard, although everything is in good shape. We have it tested annually, in fact, we just finished our annual inspection and testing by a third party of our gear, it's all in good service, in good use. But we won't be able to meet the current safety standard after the end of this year with respect to redundant time in the air cylinders for rescuing firefighters. And we need to go to a one-hour pack, high-pressure pack, and ours are all currently thirty-minute cylinders. So that's a full replacement of all the SCBA and all the- all the air cylinders and spare cylinders. And that's not possible to phase that in, we, you can't have different people working on the same fire ground partners with different safety standards. And then the last item, the venture payments apparatus, I probably defer to the treasurer to assist me in explaining that, it was well documented in the report.
I just want to jump back and forth here for a second. So that breathing apparatus, just want to make sure I'm still on the same page. When we were having discussions, the pre-budget meetings, with that, that's not being done now? That's in 2021?
Twenty twenty.
So, sorry, I'm just missing something. So we can't, we have to do everybody at once, we can't have, are we doing it in 2019, or are we doing it in 2021?
Twenty twenty, it says. You said something different?
Well, you were talking about the funding of fire apparatus reserve?
Uh, should be, should be the line, I'm just looking on the front there. So I'm looking at the summary on page twenty-eight, SCBA is scheduled to be purchased in 2020, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
And you bought it over two years being paid every-
Yeah, yes. We have, not to, we have the ability to schedule the receiving, anything, some of the large apparatus, the, in stages and making progress payments on it, so we can manage the cash flow for some of these things over a couple of years. The report, the SCBA is a new item to add to the apparatus reserve. That's a different item, that wasn't previously in that reserve. It was a one-time capital request.
Just a question through you, I guess to Donna. Donna, could you explain for the new councillors what the fire apparatus reserve is intended to do? And the funding model that we brought in a few years ago?
Okay, so it was actually during the two thousand and fourteen-
Okay, so it was actually during the two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen budget discussions, and what we used to do is, we used to pay for the apparatuses' cash flow in the year that they were actually purchased. So you might buy a new apparatus in one year and it could cost five or six hundred thousand dollars, and that would go in the tax levy in one year. So that's five or six hundred thousand is about a five or six percent increase rate there, let alone anything else. So what we wanted to do is we adopted a strategy where we would look on a long-term basis of what our needs were, because Phil doesn't purchase the vehicles like every year, not like they do in public works, it's very, you know, a vehicle has a life of twenty years approximately, so they don't occur evenly. So we decided to do a levy. We started off at two hundred thousand and then we were going to index that levy every year and that was to fund the fire apparatuses. And it was to ensure that, that our fleet would be sustainable into the future and to make sure that we smoothed out the tax impact. It's really hard when you have your, you know, just for one item, you're asking for an extra five percent in one year, it's really difficult to deal with. And then we wanted to be able to make sure that we had enough cash flow, whether we would borrow from reserves or have to debt finance. So we did come up with a plan, we looked at over a twenty-year period and you can see it from the schedule, we looked at the fire apparatuses and when they would need to be replaced and when they would need to be refurbished and we did come up with a plan. So since two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen, we have gone back, Phil and I have met, we've re-looked at the plan and what we decided to do was we would put the SCBA gear in, so the five hundred and fifty thousand in there, that's really hard just to fund in one year, so we wanted to incorporate that into the plan. And then we also looked at the fact that with the US legislation, there's going to be additional tariffs imposed, actually they're imposed right now, so they were going to be twenty-five percent extra on steel and ten percent extra on aluminum. So we had to build in the effect of the tariffs on what the replacement cost of those apparatuses would be. And then we've also, we looked at the refurbishment plan of the existing apparatuses. So based on that, we did an update to the current strategy and we're actually thinking that, what we're asking for in order to fund this and continue for it to be sustainable on a go-forward basis, is that we would continue with the original two hundred thousand plus the three percent index to that number every year, but then we would ask for an additional ten thousand this year and every other year go forward, on a go-forward basis. That's what we need to kind of make this plan sustainable. So it would be every year, the funding of this, this fire apparatus reserve would be three percent increase over the previous year plus ten thousand dollars. And that would continue and then this type of plan, we would recommend that it be, we looked at every four to five years or on an as-needed basis, just to make sure that, you know, we're still trending along. Does anyone have any questions on that?
Just to give you more, a bit more insight, the typical, the fire apparatus, the large apparatus, pumbers, tankers, we tried, well, we practiced replacing them after twenty years. We can achieve that based on condition assessment after twelve years of doing a refurbishment of the vehicle, which can be as simple as a, as a cosmetic refurbishment, or it might involve a mechanical overhaul of the pumps and the bodies, some serious, some considerable bodywork. That's been our practice on our past vehicles, but hasn't been part of the plan, is in part of the plan for one of the trucks, but not incorporated previous to that, it was a budget request every year for the, for the individual apparatus, so that's now incorporated in the plan. And the only truck that we have not had refurbishment done that we currently have is the tanker that is scheduled to be replaced in twenty twenty-two and at this point, we're not planning to do that and I wouldn't recommend doing it, the vehicle is coming to the end of its useful life.
So there's a, not sure if you're going to this or I'll just lead you to it. So there's a, two things we need to discuss. The first one being, so we've got, the only vehicle being purchased in nineteen is the chief's vehicle. So I'm looking at the special report, doesn't have a page number, but this one, you can follow that. So in Donna's report, the second last page. You'll, I'll build a step you through to the difference to the final page in just a moment. So the second last page shows the chief's vehicle, car seventy-one, capital purchase of fifty thousand dollars. Replacing a vehicle that's nine years old, so, just tell me if I get this wrong, so two thousand and eleven vehicle, so it's nine or ten years old and to replace that at, for fifty thousand dollars.
That's correct, yes.
Okay. So I assume then that's a regular vehicle then that is decked out to be a fire vehicle, so the appropriate painting, the lights, all of that goes into that?
Yes, so I would like to, we in the past have gone to the market with a fairly basic specification for a vehicle and it's just, it's just a regular vehicle, that's correct, and, and that is decked out. I would like to explore the opportunity to look at the regional purchasing plan, because similar vehicles bought for police, for other fire chiefs, other fire departments in the region and just when we go to the, based on, subsequent, we got approval to do this, I would like to look at other options to, to purchase that vehicle. The, one of the difficulties of just buying something off a lot, which can get a perfectly fine vehicle, is the cost of outfitting it with radios and lighting and things like that can be prohibitive, because they have to adapt the vehicle to make all that stuff fit inside it and sometimes it's more worthwhile, more cost-effective to buy something that's purposely designed for the, for the task and then the cost of outfitting it is less. But that's, that's the approximate cost of doing that here.
So, so the vehicle that's being replaced now, there's quite a few departments that are driving around with vehicles that are going to say not pristine shape. So what's the condition of the one that you've got now? Like I just think of animal control. The Uplander is not a nice car, so-
No, so, well, this is, this is a vehicle that can use some, it needs a transmission, it needs the heater and defroster replaced, it needs the fuel system removed and repaired, because the sending unit and the dash and the tank aren't working, and it needs the interior upholstery redone. So it's probably three and a half to four thousand dollars of the mechanical work that needs to be done to it, partially from a cosmetic view and partially from a safety perspective, hence the nine-year-old vehicle. So, I mean, that's, it doesn't make sense to be to make that, repair to that vehicle.
So what, what vehicle is it currently?
It's an Acadia.
Acadia, okay. And is it, it, does it have lights?
It does have, yes, it does have lights. It has, it has lights that are, it doesn't have a full lighting package.
Right.
It has lights that are on the interior stuck to the windshield and behind the grill. It has reflective striping and has siren and two-way radio, it's a regular issue two-way radio.
Okay, I would get, my question would go to the necessity of the extent of decking out a chief's vehicle. If I'm thinking from an emergency services standpoint, I don't know if fire is different, but we certainly don't deck out our, anyone from an inspector up is simply a vehicle. They would have the radio system for contact, but nothing else.
Well, that's fair enough. I'm responding to calls, not just driving to calls. I know we've had a few incidents with some of our other vehicles, that we've re-outfitted them with more, more safety compliant, HDA compliant lighting, because they've been in a number of near misses here in town, because the lighting isn't, aren't able to see the lighting on the smaller vehicles unless it's done properly. It's an essential piece of, the vehicle's sitting on the road at a call and command, it needs to be lit up and visible to traffic and people seeing it and it, for the lighting and the siren is essentially for responding to calls and that is part of my employment contract requirement that I respond to calls, so as far as not having it, just having an unmarked vehicle for the, doesn't make sense.
What's that?
Yeah, actually, it might be useful if you want to go and have a look at it, for any condition, I'd be happy to-
No, I'm just, my, my question was simply to the, like I say, from a, from my knowledge base, our vehicles are not at that level. They respond, they don't respond to calls, they go to a call if it's a high-level call, but they're arriving in a non-emergency vehicle per se.
So I'm, I'm not responding obviously to every medical call or remote alarm, but I am responding to every fire instructor, fire infector in the course of the day, I'm usually responding first by myself as a command officer. So I'm actually, it's a response vehicle, it's not just a non-marked car.
So the current one's an Acadia?
Yes, it's a Pontiac.
What do you, is there a plan now, do you know what you're trying to buy?
Well, we would go to the market to tender, I think, the police are currently using a Ford product, I think is a common product, I'm not-
A Ford Explorer.
A Ford, yeah, it's something smaller than that. Yeah, so Explorer I think is the smaller one. Yeah, so that's a similar type vehicle to that, but I think we would go to the open market and with the speci, with a specification and requirement that they are able to fit a lighting package into that car.
Counselor Hope.
Phil, just on that comment you made earlier about the, the region bulk buying these things, do they do that regularly or is it like a once-a-year buy or-
It's a, no, it's a plan, they have a, they have a program.
Yeah.
So there's a police program and we have the oppo, we have, I believe the township is at any level, anything that they buy, we have the opportunity to co-purchase with that plan.
So how do you go about buying through this thing or?
Uh, we would have-
You just tell them what you want and then they go-
I would, so I don't have the direct knowledge of that, I haven't, you would need to have permission from their tender process to, to piggyback on it.
It makes a whole lot of sense to me, based on what you're saying, the thing is already ready to have the, the lights or whatever installed, rather than buying it off the shelf, you know, it's, and it could be cheaper if they're bulk buying these things.
Right, it's a possibility. There's also a possibility they'll be more expensive, when you go to an overall bulk buying thing that they're trying to accommodate a number of purchasers, there's some things in there that everybody doesn't need and we might be able to do better on our own, but I would like to be able to investigate each-
It's worth exploring though, if I do, yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thanks, Counselors.
And that would be, they, they would be leasing their vehicles as opposed to purchasing?
Uh, that, I don't know.
I would, if they're doing fleet-wise, it would be leases.
Okay, I know a lot of municipalities got away from the leasing of products, if anything-
Municipalities, but you were talking region, weren't you?
That would be a regional thing, yeah. I don't know, I-
They can, they, I would think they'd get good purchasing deals through a fleet though, because they're probably purchasing quite a few, right?
Yeah. I'd just like the opportunity to investigate that option and then compare it against free market option.
They'd probably get a good deal though.
Okay, so then, unless anybody has other questions about the, the chief's vehicle, I'll start the conversation, but need lots of discussion around this, wanted some help from both Phil and Donna. So referring to the page that I have you looking at now, you'll see the replacement of pumper nine with a price tag beside it for eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. If you could please flip to the second page, so the final page of the package, this is just presenting an alternative view and all other numbers being the same, what you'll see is it shows one point six million. So what's being represented there, instead of replacing like-for-like with a pumper, the proposal on the one point six is go to this aerial, in a particular kind of aerial called a quint. So you may have seen that in some of the reports. The idea of the quint, we're going way out of my league here, is to say that it's a special operations aerial, aerial truck that has all kinds of very advanced functionality. So there's aerials and then there's quints.
No, no, a quint is just a term for a, it's just an aerial device with a pump and a water tank and hoses and ladders. It's not, it's not special, it's just a, so a triple combination pumper is a standard pumper, pump, water tank and hose and ladders and then a quint is not triple, it's got the additional complement of ladders and, and the, an elevating device, the ladder, the aerial part of the ladder. So it's not, being a quint, a quint is a terminology for an aerial ladder, it's not special and I wouldn't be recommending that we get anything special. I think we would be looking to get something that's in line with our own needs and circumstances here, which I believe would be a hundred-foot aerial, which is a standard length on a tandem chassis. I would recommend that we get that truck with a pump and a water tank, because we're going to be replacing a pumper and we would like to have the ability to pump water from the individual apparatus. Some very large departments have trucks that only have that elevating ladder on it and they bring another crew and another pumper with them to sup, to provide the water for that apparatus, we don't have that luxury. So-
So, so there's been endless discussions, I shouldn't even say endless, we've had a lot of discussions and I encourage there to still be more. The one proposal is to replace pretty much like-for-like. Then as part of the budget list for considerations, if you've got one eye over and the other one, it's a twenty-twenty purchase and then the idea would be then, we have to replace the vehicle, it's at end of life, it's a, the discussion is around what purchase, what vehicle do we purchase? So is it like-for-like or do we go to the quint?
So I can give you some more background on the quint concept. The quint concept has been before council, going back to two thousand and four, I think. It's been a subject of the Fire Master Plan in two thousand and twelve and it's been the cut, subject of discussion in three separate underwriters' insurance surveys of the town. So it's been a topic of discussion for some time. In terms of the, why is this a good time, it just doesn't make financial sense, I believe, to add another apparatus independent, to further debate the purchase of, of a quint and then at some future date decide it's a good idea and add another apparatus at a cost of one point six million dollars in addition to what we already have. The ideal time is to replace it when we're getting rid of something else and just pay it, and account for the differential on the cost. So you see the timeline there is twenty twenty, was when our oldest apparatus will be at end of life. Similar opportunities to purchase the aerial will come up in ten-year increments, where apparatus is currently spread out, so the, we would have another opportunity around twenty twenty-nine, twenty thirty. But we've already been discussing this, as I say, going back to around two thousand and four, it was a recommendation from the Fire Master Plan, when we were reviewed, that we have an aerial device in the township here and it was in twenty fourteen, twenty fourteen, I think it was, could be twenty thirteen, the implementation report was presented to council about the acquisition of an aerial based on the recommendations from the Fire Master Plan and the recommendation was to study it between twenty fourteen to twenty seventeen and then make a decision about going forward with the aerial. So the timing, there's two questions. The purchase of an aerial is a level of service discussion that is entirely within the purview of council to decide. The timing of it-
Phil, can I interrupt you there?
Sure.
You're saying that it's providing an enhanced service, that's kind of what I was waiting to ask, what is the difference in that enhanced service that would, we'd be benefiting from exactly? Like, because right now I'm very-
So we don't have, currently don't have an aerial device and we, since this discussion has started, obviously planning decisions have been made going back over twenty years and you're making them now for the future as well, and the twenty-year lifespan of this apparatus, we don't have the ability to get on the roof of the big box stores that we have in town now, that, you know where they are, we don't have the ability to reach over or get in behind any of the townhouse complexes that are being proposed or have already been developed. We don't have the ability to reach the roofs of some of the larger houses in town, there are the steep roofs in town. We don't have the ability, we have ground ladders, but ground ladders aren't even tall enough to reach the roof on some of the houses that are in town here now. Shouldn't really be on roofs, going back in the construction industry, you'll know when a building was built with a cut frame roof with either timber or lumber, it was fine to be on that roof when the building was on fire and cutting a hole for ventilation or for rescue or investigating a chimney fire, but buildings now are built out of lightwood frame construction, the roofs aren't even nailed together, they're made of trusses that are gang-plated together, they're, it's not really safe to be on a roof when it's, the building's on fire, because they can, can collapse without notice. And some of the pitches of the roofs in, in more recent developments in town are too steep to be on, the roof- uh, the roof walking on them, especially if it's snowy. So part of it's a safety concern for our staff. Part of it's the ability that we can't practically get on some of the structures that we have in town even now. And, uh, um, and I know people will argue and, I mean, people who are experts who write to the paper and who sit in coffee shops will talk about how we don't need one or we absolutely have one, or absolutely need to have one. So an aerial, a hundred foot aerial is what I'm proposing. Has a practical useful height of seventy feet. You can't climb a la- ladder that's practically vertical. So by the time you, uh, climb a ladder that's pitched at seventy degrees, you can go about seventy feet in the air. Um, it would be suitable for any of the buildings that we have built in town now or they're currently proposed that we've seen plans for. Um, it has other, it's not just about rescuing a senior citizen from a balcony six floors up. It's got all other kinds of uses for fire department operations, for visibility, for water application, for access to other levels, uh, as well as rescue. And, uh, we like to incorporate that with a pumping apparatus and replace it in a timely fashion. Again, we aren't able to provide that service at all at this time. We have not been able to up till now and we have managed, but, uh, we've also discussed the need for it and it's been identified by third parties that we do have a need to provide that sort of service in town, so.
That's the insurance, the third party that says we need this?
Uh, third party would be our Fire Master Plan saying in order to, so again, the level of service is entirely up to council to decide. Nobody can tell you what, what level of service you want to provide. That's up to council.
So we can't reach today if Walmart goes up?
Can't get on the roof from the ground.
Just can't reach it?
Right. They don't have a ladder long enough to get to it.
Sorry, I'm, okay.
Where, sorry, where's our nearest one?
Uh, so we have, our nearest aerial is in Stovil. We have a fire protection agreement with Stovil, um, to use their aerial if we, if we request it. They don't staff it themselves. They would call back to get, for a crew to go on it. So it's a best case scenario. It's, uh, it's not always available to us, but it's, it's available if we ask. Uh, we pay two thousand dollars an hour when we ask for it. We've never asked for it because it's impractical, it's just too far away to do any good. It wouldn't be here in time to do, be of any use. Yeah, yeah. So we can't, you get, you may think, and there's other options too as well as you may contemplate that there are other larger departments in this region that have them. We aren't eligible to ask for an aerial from one of our neighboring departments in the region under mutual aid because we don't have one that we can return that service in kind. So we participate in the mutual aid program from the perspective of we exchange pumbers back and forth and tankers back and forth because frequently, actually, especially with our northern neighbors because we can offer them the same service that we're offering or we're requesting of them. And, uh, but we can't offer that service to anybody else right now because we don't have an aerial. So we can't really ask under mutual aid for one.
You, you made mention of the next opportunity being ten years away. Just looking across at that final page of this special report, there is another, is a tanker being replaced in twenty-twenty-two?
Yes.
Just help me understand, we, we wouldn't be able to do it as part of that transaction?
Well, we're gonna, um, well, we're looking to, to get another tanker, which is a different kind of apparatus. It's a rural apparatus. That's, uh, um, we could, and that would, and actually, we wouldn't be having the same. We could do it then, but we would have, yeah, extending, uh, essentially exchanging a, a tanker- An urban apparatus for a tanker apparatus. And the difference in prices would be significant as well. The tanker's not as much as the pumper.
Right, but, so the bigger issue that we've had with every other department is we're squarely behind, whatever, eight ball with the culvert, with other initiatives that we're trying to do. So I'm just trying to see how do we balance all of this? And I'm hearing what you're saying with each one of them and now's the right time and it's, it's additionally eight hundred, recognizing that that's going to add to the debt. So knowing that we'll be paying for this for a long period of time, so locking in percentage increases for a period of time like some of the other discussions that we're, we're part of. So it's just that big picture view that I need to keep reminding because it really is part of the budget list consideration. We understand the truck needs to be replaced. It's do we buy an eight hundred thousand dollar vehicle or a one point six million dollar vehicle, bearing in mind the big picture of what we're trying to deal with here.
Right, so I, I guess my response to that is replacing it when we're going to be replacing another pumper is the, is the, the minimum amount of impact? Is we're just, I guess the other part, and I'm not sure the treasurer can speak to this to me. Some of that differential in the aerial may be picked up with the development charges by law. There is an opportunity to get some of that, not much, but some of that, you know? Okay, so the, uh-
Sorry, it will be in the plan, um, but currently we're expecting to receive about twenty thousand-ish in DCs and that's not always guaranteed. And I was using that twenty thousand that we would get every year to help pay down the debenture hall for the new fire hall. So although you'll see these items in the DC plan when we look at it, um, in January or February, if the funds don't come in, I don't have the funds available to spend. They can be part of the plan, but if the funds don't come in, if the development doesn't happen, it doesn't help me.
So recognizing, uh, recognizing what the chair of the committee has just said, we appreciate that this is an expensive piece and it's, uh, to be, uh, looked at alongside other major expenditures. It's not going to, we have to go ahead and replace our existing apparatus of the schedule in order to prevent these bumps from happening. That's what we're trying to get to. If the, if the decision is that we're not going to do that, then we need to just acknowledge that we're not going to provide that service and move on and revisit this in ten years. We couldn't, we shouldn't be, we can't postpone the decision because we need to replace the apparatus. So if the decision now is we're not going to do that, that's, um, that's not my recommendation, but obviously we will do, provide the absolute best level of service we can with the resources that are provided to us. We will just, uh, we will follow that course. Um, but, but the notion of, I mean, that's why we're in this position because we've been bumping things out as we go along. We have to replace our current fleet in the schedule that's, uh, provided for you, so.
Which you can see coming again, Counselor Hyatt will be right with you. You can see it coming again with the, the series of vehicles that have been purchased sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen. Uh, and it's a fair ways down the road, but it's coming again.
Yes.
It's just unlike some, unlike, uh, Public Works where you've got a fleet that you replace one or two, however it is every year, whatever that turns out to be. This is a tsunami that's hitting now and a scheduled tsunami coming again in the future.
Yes.
Sorry, Counselor Hyatt, you got a question?
Yeah, I have, uh, actually two, they're, and they're related. Uh, one is, I don't know, Phil, whether you can answer this question or not, but really for a glorified pumper, we're talking almost double the cost. I mean, I, I'm trying to get my head around what you're actually getting for that additional, other than a ladder, you know?
Some of this, some of this, uh, are, uh, assumptions that we built into this plan. One of them, the treasurer's mentioned that the, the, uh, we're building in this tariff. Uh, we are hope that the tariff would be gone before we have to buy the truck. But we have to plan for that.
I'm trying to get in my head around why it's double the cost.
Well, honestly, from my own experience, when I, when I look at the, uh, because I have quite a bit of experience buying fire apparatus and aerial apparatus and it's not typically twice as much. But when, when we do the math with the factor of inflation and the current, we've investigated what other people have paid for apparatus, that's a conservative number that we, we've built in to say that that's the potential cost of, of an aerial device. But honestly, I've never really seen one being twice as much. It's usually around one point five to one point seven, five times as much.
But even so, I mean, that's just a substantial jump.
It is.
And I guess part of the rationale when we, we put this whole fire apparatus thing in place was to keep that line kind of flat so that you didn't have these spikes. And I'm thinking if we're offering a different level of service, Donna, I know you're saying that the actual input on the DCs would be, be smaller than we would anticipate. But all I'm saying is if we have that extra eight hundred thousand because we're offering now a, a different higher level of service, some of that should be able to be captured in a DC type of, uh, thing, rather than slapping it all on, on a replacement type of vehicle, you know what I mean?
It has to be based on growth, right?
And what he's saying with the new townhouse developments and that sort of thing.
So it's not a-
If this is a necessity, then obviously it should be a level of service that we're ramping up, you know? And we should be able to recapture, I think, some of it at least from a DC perspective.
You can, but you have to be able to, um, to build the DCs out and you have to be able to receive the DCs in. Like, if you look at the two thousand and, um, fourteen DC study, it said that with the new fire hall, we could spend quite, quite a bit more in DCs.
Right.
But when it came down to it, we didn't have the DCs collected to be able to pay what it said we would. We hadn't collected it to that extent. And we do see that. So all these, those, these are part of the DC study. They say they can be funded by DCs. If we don't get the DCs, we can't fund them through DCs if we don't receive the DCs.
Like, just, just on the overall financing of it though, again, to go back to my earlier comment, to keep that flat line, is there a way to, to push this out so that it's, it's not such a huge hit in, in-
You're not going to like to hear this. The actual way to make it flat or is actually not push it out is to, is to compress it and divide the trucks over a, uh, because I, we've already-
Because really, it's the differential, right? You're going to need the new pumper anyway. It's the extra eight hundred or whatever that number is.
That's correct. But e- even in the long term, so we have, uh, for instance, we have, uh, three pumbers now. One potentially to be replaced by an aerial. There's still two coming together at some future. You buy one now and one in ten years, you're still ending up buying two together at another future date. The, the, that might actually level-
I understand where you're going, it's just the-
I, well, I'm, I'm just facing reality-
I'm just trying to minimize the hit.
Yeah.
As opposed to, you know, not the need, but the actual cost of it, right?
Right, so in order to spread it out, there isn't really a potential to spread the lifecycle any further. We're, we're pushing the envelope now. Another thing that's not considered here, we lifecycle them at twenty years. If, if you gave your permission today to, to buy this purchase and we went to market to buy, it would be more than twelve months before it could be delivered. So it's actually, while we've lifecycleed it at twenty, they're actually being used into twenty-one and twenty-two years. And if there's any hiccups, it's longer than that. So, um, you don't see that. We could manage the cash flow in terms of paying for the chassis and, and the fire body over twenty-one and twenty-two years, but we should never get, we shouldn't allow the lifecycle to go beyond twenty in, in a practical planning sense.
To go back to the example of, of the fire chief vehicle, are there group buys on these type of equipments that would help us out or are we kind of on our own tendering it out?
Uh, we could try and connect with somebody else, with another municipality that's buying them. I, when I look at, uh, that's some background-
Again, I'm just trying to keep, hold it on the increase, that's all.
So, so what we, what our needs and circumstances here, I think, are less than probably what some other people are buying them. And I was asked by the finance chair to look into what other municipalities are same size are, are doing in respect to an aerial and, and I was surprised, uh, I was surprised by the outcome, but I also surprised at some of the things that they're buying are, to me, an elaborate piece of apparatus for the size of the community that they have. So the prices that we have back on what people have recently spent on aerials are, I think, more than what we would need to spend. But, uh, um, an air, uh, pumbers are being bought all the time by somebody, for sure. You can go and get a, uh, you could get a demo unit for somebody, a kind of a cookie cutter thing. But then after the end of the day, you end up paying an additional fee to have it reworked to fit your, the rest of your equipment. For, for instance, the breeding apparatus, we have to have some of the things reworked to fit that, so.
So is there a range within the quint category that, or is it a kind of a standard?
No, 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 there's a range. There's absolutely a range. There's a range if you have a steel ladder and aluminum ladder. I'd recommend a steel ladder. There's a, uh-
I'm just thinking for our needs and you know what they are going forward, probably in the next ten years.
Right.
It's not going to be a lot, but if we have to be able to service, as you mentioned earlier, that third floor or whatever, then obviously it's going to have to be something that we look at, but it's, it's how do we pay for it, I guess is the reason.
Yes, so, and I, uh, I have absolute confidence in the numbers that the treasurer prepared here. She's put a lot of work into this table and, and, excuse me.
So, uh, we'll throw it in Donna's lap to deal with it. Thanks, Phil.
Yeah, Phil, just, um, has there been an, is there a thought? I, you mentioned the, the calendar dates, obviously, of these. But if we look at the tanker and the pumper, is there, you know, they're two years apart. Um, keeping in mind, I, I think one of the things that we have to keep in mind from the public standpoint is we've just put a ton of money into a brand-new fire station. Not to say that we don't need this equipment. Is it feasible to flip those two? Like, are they in condition where you could purchase your tanker now and push the other one to the tanker timeframe so that we're not hitting up, based on the fact that we're dealing with a culvert, we're dealing with other projects? Is a two-year flipover on those vehicles, even though it's not calendar dated? Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, absolutely, it is. That is a potential to do that, absolutely. Something we talked about, um.
Just wondering if that would-
The two vehicles that we have scheduled to replace, the, the pumper in twenty-twenty and the tanker in twenty-twenty-two, are both at the very end of their lifecycle now. So we're already pushing, the tanker that we propose in twenty-twenty-two is already going to be a couple of years past its useful date. There's a few, the, the truck is still, because it's a fire truck and because it's maintained in pristine condition and the firefighters look after it, they look and function well. You can't get replacement parts for them. You can't service them. Uh, I was really surprised with the tanker. Last year we had to put a new computer in it, which was the, like a Commodore sixty-four truck, but anyway.
I know what that is.
Yeah, so the, uh, Dinger, but it was a, a situation that the, the unit failed. It, it couldn't be driven, couldn't even be moved without replacing the part and it couldn't be purchased from the OEM anymore because it's not manufactured. We had to go to a guy that specializes in this engine, transmission, and pumper that was able to source one for it. So for that, it was a three thousand dollar part and, uh, go ahead, Dinger.
Okay, and maybe this question's already been asked, but in our discussion, we talked about two pumbers on the horizon. One now, one in ten years from now, or whatever it was. And that, the critical decision that needs to be made when you're purchasing a pumper is whether you're going to purchase a pumper, whether you're going to punt, purchase an, an aerial which acts as a pumper. So you may decide that you don't want to purchase an aerial at this time because of the increased cost, but you would still purchase the pumper. And that would just push the aerial off into the future at some point in time when you purchase the second pumper. That was our discussion that we had. So it's not necessarily that you have to buy an aerial, but the time to buy it is when you're buying a pumper. So that, you, did you cover that already?
We did that.
Okay.
But the discussion we also had, which Phil was explaining, is on twenty-twenty-two,
Yeah.
we're buying a tanker,
Yes.
which is primarily for rural. The other opportunity would be kind of an overkill, but you push it out till then.
Yeah.
You pay the incremental costs for a aerial then and then now you're running an aerial truck out to a rural fire.
Yeah, exactly.
Which isn't necessarily, just given to what Counselor Snooks was just saying, I, I know we're, we're getting one eventually, it's, is now the time.
Is now the time already you start saving up for that time in the ten-year horizon when you've got your money actually in place to be able to purchase it. The hard part now is trying to take it, take a reserve that's been set up to deal with equipment and then just do a major expense within that where you actually haven't had a chance to flatline it like Counselor Hyatt's saying. Is trying to get that amount so it's the same. And that's where we've gone with all our budgets. But it, when you change the, the way you buy or what you buy, all of a sudden you're back to this big spike again and, and it changes the whole thing.
Which is the suggestion that I was wondering if we switch those two, if that helps in that.
The second one, yes, it'll be arrived in twenty-nineteen, actually shortly after. So there's a, that's a second tanker, that's a separate issue.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's in the, it's covered. Yes, very shortly, within the next couple of months.
Okay. I'm just going off, I'm just going.
So we have three pumbers, we will have two tankers. And, and, and just as the CAO has indicated, it just, the, the differential is, makes us, to make most sense to replace like-for-like and play the differential at the same time. So I'm fully appreciative of all the other demands. It's, it's not that. I, we need to, I'm only asking you to commit to a plan, not even to purchasing the aerial. Like I've just, uh, let's just commit to a plan.
Let me, let me make a suggestion.
Phil, Phil needs a plan, that's what he needs.
Make a, a suggestion.
A plan's key.
There's still more items on the budget list to talk about. So we're not done fire regardless. So even if I cut this off, we still have more to go. So why don't, our food's waiting for us. Why don't we eat? Still give us time to kind of digest what we're talking about here at the same time. Come back in, wrap up this discussion, finish off the rest of the fire budget. Does that work? So, quick lunch? Can we be back here at one? Is that too fast?
Mr. Chair, could I, in the interim, could I ask the treasurer maybe to investigate? Mr. Chair, could I, in the interim, could I ask the treasurer maybe to investigate ways to really finance that extra piece? Really, that's the part we're talking about? I think we have all got our head around that the pumper needs to be replaced. It's just a matter of how do we deal with that extra piece and-
If you deal with it.
And it may not be as high as eight hundred thousand. I don't know. From what you're saying, it could be less, right?
Gord, Gord, I can speak to that. So, um, the plan was whether we go with a pumper or an aerial, we would venture either of those.
Right.
But the thing is, we're, so, um, and then you gotta consider, consider financing costs, right?
But are there ways to keep that levy, I guess, crunched rather than-
We have to pay for it. It all does have to be paid for. So, um, when I factored in the difference between the costs, I said that the additional incremental cost of having the quint plus the additional financing charges on the higher apparatus cost would be one point one million.
Okay. So I'm gonna call for recess, uh, or ask for a motion to take a recess till court, until one fifteen? Need somebody to make a motion for that? Pam? All in favor? Meet you in half an hour. So a call to order again, the special meeting on the finance committee? Um, so to continue the, the discussion around fire capital budget, just as a, you know, sometimes just taking a breath actually helps out. So realizing we've got, um, serious issues to consider. You know, Mayor Dave was saying before, we've gotta just get moving, um, with related to the, the other discussions that we've had about other projects. Around this one, does it make sense to have, like, I don't wanna say a subcommittee, but a, a group to take a look specifically at one item and one item only being, which vehicle are we going to purchase? I'll, for lack of a better word, I'm not huge on this term, but empower that group to make, come back and make a recommendation for which we would be, not have endless debate around. We would go back, say that these two or three people went through the process and they recommend this. And unless there's something bizarre happens, we would say, we accept that recommendation. Let's get it done. So would that, would that make sense? Other than, I mean, we've had a good discussion. We know what we're talking about, right? We're talking about, do we buy a pumper or do we buy an aerial? And we could talk about that probably all afternoon. My thinking is, put a group in charge of one way or the other and then move from that. Oh, that's really, Counselor Hyatt?
Excuse me. Through you, Mr. Chair. If I can recommend that the, uh, I'm not sure who the vice chair of, of emergency services would be. I know, I think, uh, Mayor Dave is the chair of the-
He's the chair. Are you-
Maybe those two could get together with staff or whoever they need to and, uh, talk about it. And then, and then come back to council with the recommendation.
Okay. Sorry. It, sorry to interrupt you, Gord. It's, it's Todd.
If Counselor Snooks and Mayor Dave, uh, get together and, uh, come forward with the recommendation as they are in that portfolio.
Just to build on the thought, I'm okay with that. What, does it make sense? I'm just thinking of anybody else that should be on that. Oh, good. Cause I need something to do. Um, no, it probably does make sense to be me. Yeah. Oh, I know. I gotta learn, stop asking. Just, stop poking bears. Um... Every time I do this, it hurts. So, um... So, so then Counselor Hyatt, the motion would be then to establish a committee?
A subcommittee of, uh, yourself, Mayor Dave, and Counselor Snooks to come forward with the recommendation on how to proceed with the, the fire chief's recommendation. I'd like to know more about how to finance it. If, I don't wanna, you know, drag this out any longer than it needs to be, but if there's a way to spread it or, I'll leave that up to you guys to figure that out.
Well, and certainly Donna would, would come up with those options.
We touched on DCs, and I know there's not a lot there, but if there, anything that'll help out or, or balance that over longer term.
Okay. So we've got that motion then to establish a committee to come back consisting of Mayor Dave, subcommittee, Mayor, uh, Counselor Snooks, myself, to come forward with a recommendation regarding the decision regarding a pumper or an aerial? And Donna. Well, I'd, and can we just say and staff? Okay, and staff. Thank you. So we have that motion in front of us? All in favor? It's carried. So then Phil, going back to the, I think, tell me if I'm wrong. I think that covers the special report from Donna, right? So if I have this right, the, the only thing left, correct me if I'm wrong, is the items for consideration? No, we haven't yet. Oh, okay. So my left brain was reminding me that just before we leave the white document?
Yep.
Yes. So you're right. So there are recommend, recommendations still on the page before all the figures. So it'll be the third last page.
Can I get it back? That's all. If we can receive this report, Mr. Chair, and refer it to that committee, I think. Cause we're not making any decisions on it today.
Can we do, you okay with that?
Unless there's something Donna wants to add to that?
Yes. Okay. All right. Counselor Hyatt? What's being considered is that the items one through four are separate from the decision regarding the, the purchase of a fire truck. This goes back to the, the first discussions we had earlier in the, in the meeting about, um, yeah, the item in number two and then that increase of ten thousand per year referred to in item four.
So the way I read the report, Mr. Chair, is that we're having an option of either picking four or five? Is that where you're going?
So, uh, option four would be the standard. That's kinda what we need to maintain the plan as is right now with the pumper in there.
Right. And that, uh, five is for the quint, correct? So if we're going to task that committee with making that recommendation, is it premature to be voting on either four or five on this report?
Four would just be standard. Five would be if you wanted the quint.
But we don't know yet what that recommendation will be, or are you gonna wait?
And that's okay. You don't need to know, but you can still adopt one to four and then make the decision on the quint later.
So we would just amend number four if, if it changes? Okay, I'll make that recommendation.
Okay. So we have a recommendation then to accept the first four recommendations of the report? So move. So, all in favor? Carried. Thank you, Counselor Hyatt. Yeah, we're good to do here? Okay. So then, Phil, we're back to the budget list. And you can start with, uh, twenty nineteen on the, so I've got the, have we got the same page? The one with the yellow marks from the last time? Um, so it starts-
Uh, creation of a new position in twenty nineteen, additional fire prevention officer. This is based solely on demand for the requirements of our fire prevention division to make due inspections enforcement. So their level, their plans examination, uh, we are not currently able to keep up with the demand and we're of, uh, in that with one person. We also need to address the, uh, serious issues of lack of compliance with smoke alarms in the municipality. And we will be looking, uh, whether we have this position or not in the new year, we'll be looking to adopt the policy that the fire departments across the region are adopting with, uh, re-inspecting homes that are not compliant when we become, uh, familiar with them or when we become aware of them. So there's three months because, uh, with reflection on the, uh, time it takes us for this budget to pass and then to create a posting and to go through a recruitment process, would not be envisioning that we would be able to get a staff person in position before the fourth quarter. And then the, uh, the value of that, uh, position salary and benefits is, uh, is predetermined within township's salary grid. And that's, uh, and it's, it's commensurate with a probationary rate for a new fire prevention officer in relation to the current, uh, salary of our full-time, uh, staff that we do have now. And then that continues in twenty twenty with the full year for that, uh, for that position. Associated with that position for a full year in twenty twenty is an additional small car, for, so that person could do inspections on the road. Um, and that car would be any of a standard, uh, issued car that's similar to what the enforcement officers currently have when they're doing inspections. Uh, so that's the fire prevention officer salary and benefits and that additional small vehicle. Uh...
Just before we leave that one, would it be possible, realizing that you're behind because of the many things that have been going on, is that contractable?
For the sake of educating everybody on where this might go, would this individual who would be a fire prevention officer, would they also be considered a firefighter?
So, I guess I, now I have a couple of questions. So under the act, a fire prevention officer is a firefighter.
Is a firefighter?
Yes. So, um, so they would-
So then we would have two full-time firefighters in, in essence?
Yes.
And it's the third one that would, the fourth one?
Yes.
So if you have three, three full-timers, not in management, that's not the number. It's, it's the fourth.
It's the fourth, I believe, yes.
Okay. Just to be something to be mindful of is when you, a lot, that's when the union will come in, is on the fourth. So at this point, right now, we have one, which is our fire prevention officer slash firefighter. This would be number two, just, just to keep track of the number. Cause once you hit the four, then all of a sudden, you're now into a potentially unionized-
Potentially, yes.
Yeah.
Is this then a internal posting first?
I, I believe, so I believe that we, so this is a, a position that has certain qualifications that are requirement. It's not a train-on-the-job position. So in order to have those certifications, you need to have completed a course of study either at community college or the fire college or something like that. So it's not, I would like, I can imagine that there are perhaps a small group of our current complement that would be qualified. But I would, in the interest of verifying their competency, I think it would be prudent that they compete in the open market for the positions. That's the way I would, I would post it internally and externally at the same time and welcome, and encourage our internal candidates to apply. I, I just, personally, I believe that healthy competition is good rather than-
The reason I ask then would be based on union aspect, though, there, there isn't a union in place that would affect that then?
No.
Okay.
So I, I guess there's a, um, as a matter, so, so the labor relations with the volunteer firefighters is entirely different than with the full-time firefighters. Full-time firefighters have a section in the Fire Prevention Protection Act, Protection and Prevention Act that, uh, regulates labor relations. And they, and it's been in the news as well because the current provincial government has changed some of the, some of the legislation around that. But it's still very, very, uh, powerful labor legislation in the, in the act for full-time firefighters. Uh, so that is the position as well as the two, as a car that would go with that in year two. The rest, we've already discussed the upgrade, a pump to an aerial, the incremental cost. And then the, the two remaining are leftovers from, uh, the electronic sign at the station is defective. It's been replaced a number of times under warranty. It's not, uh, it's related entirely to the circuitry in the sign. The software is working fine, the pedestal, the power supply, all that's working fine. It's entirely related to the, uh, individual LED devices that are in the sign. That's, uh, that price, that's an estimate there, is an estimate from the company that did the sign on, on, uh, the approach to town on forty-seven. So it is, uh, an opportunity to go to market and, and get that cheaper. The sign currently isn't, is functioning with letters missing, lights missing, some lights that don't go out and some of the animation doesn't work. So it's, uh, it's, it's working in a reduced capacity at the present time. And then the fire station entrance steps were a feature of the fire station that was deleted during the design process since a bend before council, uh, once at least before, to reconsider putting the steps in. It is a constant sore point for people who attend the, uh, the state- ramps that meet the requirements of the building code that's present, just, uh, it's back from previous years.
Good for discussion when we get to the overall budget list. Certainly, I think it would draw some attention on, for either one of those. Okay. I'll just finish my thought. Um, so I think it would just draw, one of the things we'd have to consider, um, given how new that station is. Go ahead, Phil.
Just a question, Phil. Um, the electronic sign, it's out of warranty now?
Yes.
And that, no, that was a real dud. It didn't last very long.
Uh, it was a, it was a, a cash allowance on the, on the, with the contractor. But it was part of the overall price of the hall when it was built, yes. So I, it's, the, um, the original vendor, the independent, the contractor that was hired by the general contractor, did service it during the, a few, a few times, actually. If you go and look at it now, you can see that the, where the repairs were made. They're obvious when you drive by it. But, uh, it's no longer being covered by warranty.
Any other questions, Chris? Anything? Any other questions, any members of council? Um, Presna being here, any questions from the public? Well, Phil, thank you for your patience. That was a, I know you were scheduled to be here for nine o'clock and lots of things got in the way of that moving on, so thank you for your patience. Appreciate the information.
Thank you very much.
So next up, next up is the clerks department.
It doesn't matter, Debbie.
So bylaws to come back in?
I think she's coming.
Sure. Looks like we're gonna do bylaw first, just if you wanna make your way there. Yeah, I'm just making my way there, girl. Just trying to find it, too.
It's on page ten. Ten in the orange, sorry.
Page ten in the orange. Oh, front orange. Uh, page ten of the, of this shade of orange. Coral, huh. Okay, good. So we'll go straight to page ten. Yeah, absolutely, I'm sorry, yeah, go straight into it.
Just having a look at page ten, the operating budget for the bylaw services, the bylaw office specifically, there isn't any significant increases. You'll see that there's a bit of a spike in the court fees, sixty-six point seven percent. The court fees line covers our service charges through the MTO heiress. And the spike is also because we do have online ticketing system. It does come at a price unfortunately of a dollar per ticket. So there's just an increase there to account for, say, if there were a thousand people to pay online through that service, it would cost us a thousand dollars as well. So that's just a small spike that you see there. The hundred percent in field supplies, what that accounts for is, the township has a noise testing machine and by law, for testing purposes, it has, the machine has to be calibrated every two years and the calibrator itself that, that ensures that the measurement is correct has, has to be calibrated every other year. So there's kind of a bit of a flip-flop of doing those things and those requirements to ensure that when I do those, those noise level readings, that they are accurate and they can be used for court purposes. And then the other line of increase at the bottom is with regards to property cleanups. I generally guesstimate fifteen thousand dollars a year for contracted cleanups, but it was a bit higher last year and has been a bit higher typically. In twenty seventeen, there was a, a building that I had to demolish, a domestic building, so it did spike those costs. Those are recoverable costs though, anything that we're doing through that, we do have an in-and-out account for those, so although it shows as an expense, we do get that money back plus an administration fee.
So straight down to the cost, sorry. Straight down where it says cost recoveries is the offsetting twenty thousand dollars. Okay. You gave me a great explanation, Andre, about parking fines, how as the message becomes clearer to people who park like that, the good news is they're getting the message, the bad news is the associated revenue goes down.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's a double-edged sword, right? You know, with our overnight parking, obviously, we don't, we do it because we don't want people out on the streets. And we are seeing, in the last couple of years, we are seeing quite a decrease in that first night, that was first ticket. So typically, we used to have two officers actually on duty because you're, you're eighty-plus tickets, so you're almost in and out the entire night, that you need a second person. And with our first overnight, this year, it dropped to, I believe, about fifty tickets, which is significantly lower, and now we're about thirty tickets. So it's a good thing because people are off the roads and they're not in the way, but it's a bad thing because we see that loss in revenue. So the climate is also causing a bit of a problem for my department as well because we did have to cancel some of those parking shifts later on into the, the year of this past year due to warmer weather. So we would go for a scheduled overnight and it's, all of a sudden, it's twelve degrees that night and there's no way it's snowing, so.
My understanding, and I may have this wrong and look to some of the more experienced council members, is that there was a member of staff brought on who was primarily focused on parking tickets, especially around the schools, and it was to be self-funded, is my understanding. I really thought that she would drive the revenue to pretty much cover her salary. Is that a true understanding?
When the, my department underwent a reorganization when I took over animal services, there was a, a person that was added, a part-time officer at twenty-four hours. It was also in conjunction with receiving parking complaints surrounding the schools pretty much on a weekly basis. So we began to, to be more proactive and to actually have a scheduled officer that it was part of her daily job that she do, she does that. So I... Being lower than they typically are, I, I would think that her salary is still being covered because her salary is actually based upon a percentage of the full-time officers. So it's, she makes less money because she's only enforcing the one bylaw. It's always been like that. So I would think the majority of her wage would be covered by the, that revenue.
Just, through you to the budget committee as well, I, I think another consideration in the fact that our fees are down is that we had a maternity leave to deal with in there as well. So actually, the parking position was vacant for a period while the parking person moved and was being trained for the mat leave and then by the time we backfilled that, so there was a period of time that there was no park, or very little parking enforcement being done in that position.
Yeah, just under staffing, this wouldn't really be our staff. I know in past times, we've deputized persons to give out tickets in certain locations for, there's a townhouse complex, I think there's a couple of other ones that we do in town. Is there a way to deputize people for specific roles? I'm thinking around the school areas, that we still get complaints all the time about, you know, people double parked and so on, so forth. Just to work in a specific zone, like at the high school, school corridor seems to be more problematic than others. I know I've, I've had a few more at Quaker Village Public, welcome to the club, that could be dealt with specifically to those site locations rather than having a staff person assigned as well. Is there a way to do that?
We, we do have a policy in place that's specifically to deal with private property owners or persons that are in care and control of the property, so property managers. It's specific to a property and they're designated as, as parking enforcement officers and not MLOs because we didn't want to, we wanted to make that clear distinction so that all of a sudden, you're not having to, you know, give that private property owner a vest and protective equipment, but...
Like I'm just thinking, you know, with the weather, we've been fairly lucky so far, but it's gonna deteriorate and when it gets that way, people just don't pay attention to no-stopping signs or anything, right?
My staff still, you know, on, on somewhat of a daily occurrence are at the schools.
I know they are, I'm just thinking, are they overwhelmed, probably not the word, but if they could have assistance, it might help. But you're saying it's specific to a, a property, then I think maybe I'm...
Yeah.
Parking up the wrong tree there, so.
I don't think that would work and I don't think that I would wanna subject somebody to what my officers go through at those schools, so.
Because, yeah, it's problematic at best, you know, and there are people that seem to do it again and again and again, but...
Councilor Beach?
Thank you. Thank you. Andre, vehicle expenses, what was happening there from like last year to this year? And there was less spent on a guesstimation, any particular reason?
Well, I, I did replace one of the bylaw vehicles this past year, so we do have a brand-new car. So the only expenses that I've incurred with the new car are some oil filters and some oil. The other money is entirely spent on five oh three.
Okay, that makes...
Which is our older truck, yeah.
That makes sense.
Andre? Excuse me?
Councilor Gere?
Yeah. As far as the parking tickets are concerned, how many do you actually collect compared to the number that are issued? Do people pay them voluntarily or do you have to take them to court?
I would say right now, we probably deal with, I would say, two or three tickets a year that physically go to trial. We're able to resolve the majority of the parking infractions through the second option, which is a guilty plea with an explanation. And that's more just having a ticket review with myself or the full-time officer and discussing with the person kinda where they went wrong and that they understand that for schools offering options where they can park, where they won't get a ticket in future. So we are able to resolve those. But there is a fair amount of, of parking ticket reviews occurring right now, so that's why I've also assigned my full-time officer to be doing those as well because it does keep us very busy with doing those. But I would say the number of voids, like tickets that are not physically written or that there's a mistake on them, I'd have to get back to you with a percentage, but very low. So it really depends on the circumstance of, you know, when the officer's writing that We also have implemented pay tickets online, an option for residents or anybody that has received a parking ticket to, to pay those tickets. When we implemented that system, I think that staff had a general concern that with our, our parking tickets, they had basically an early payment option and then a set fine, that when a person went to go pay online, that they would be confused about what they should be paying at what time. So then we eliminated it to just having a set fine. So that has probably increased the amount of parking ticket reviews that we've had as a result of that because rather than people seeing the lower early payment fine, they're seeing just the set fine, so it's also caused a spike in, in our ticket reviews.
Unless there's any other questions, what I suggest, rather than go to capital for bylaw, why don't we continue straight through and talk about animal control and then we'll bundle both bylaw and animal control, capital into the second half of the discussion? So we're on to page eleven.
During our pre-budget meetings, we had a discussion with regards to the operations, operational budget for animal control. As you'll see in the twenty nineteen numbers, significant decreases in operational costs. What staff was able to do is have a look at the current animal shelter and create that twenty nineteen budget based upon the intention, for the most part, we will most likely be in that building for all of twenty nineteen, so it was a... Quite a bit along, along twenty nineteen. Out to me and that's vehicle expenses, still remains an issue, but not requiring any kind of replacements at this time.
When I look at revenue, this may be a question, you know, I'm probably dismissing something. My understanding is we share this with SCUGOG. Where's the SCUGOG contribution to this?
Reimbursement from SCUGOG.
Right, where's the reimbursement from SCUGOG? What a weird place to put it. So out of the, I'm saying the obvious, so out of the three hundred and eighty-eight thousand budget, one hundred and ninety-two goes to SCUGOG, okay.
Yes, there's only certain things that are separated, that would be licensing, legal fees depending on each municipality and their use. So the majority of the operating costs are shared between Uxbridge and SCUGOG.
And then just, one of the other discussions that we had when Andre was in, in a previous meeting, just to put it in context, that there was, for year-to-date, there were sixty-eight dogs and cats rescued, managed from Uxbridge and a hundred and fifty-three from SCUGOG. You might suggest in SCUGOG getting a pretty good deal. Maybe we can include that in the animal shelter discussion. Just so. Any other questions regarding expenditures or the revenue side for the animal control? Kinda rush through that, do we need a couple minutes to look through it? No? Okay, then we'll just jump up to capital then, Andre. Fifteen of capital, for the summary and then sixteen in particular, okay.
The, page fifteen is referring to the replacement of our unit five oh three for the bylaw department. The bylaw department took over this vehicle from the building department. We've been monitoring it on a daily basis, or on a yearly basis to try and push out Is the recommendation of staff that we do replace it. We are incurring quite a bit of cost, the vehicle itself, most notably even in the last week was in for repairs. I did some calculations over the last three years with regards to what we've spent on that truck. And to give you an idea, from January to October, forty-six hundred dollars we had spent on unit five oh three. Twenty-seventeen costs were twenty-seven hundred and the twenty-sixteen costs were almost twenty-three hundred. So that's approximately ten thousand dollars that we've spent on this unit in the last three years. From a, from staff's perspective, you know, anytime we're going to any kind of training or we're traveling outside of the municipality, I wouldn't have one of the officers take that vehicle because it's not reliable. I believe it was involved in some collisions prior to me owning it as well, which I don't know have added to it, but it just seems it's not, at this point, staff do not feel that it should be on the road anymore and should be replaced.
So the vehicle expenses on the previous one, from the, from the operating budget, is included in that or is vehicle expenses like we had with the fire truck?
So your, the vehicle expenses that are listed on there, take a look at, let's So these numbers show sixty-eight hundred and nine dollars was the actual year-to-date. Just from staff's perspective, we have the two units, one being the new car and one being the truck. So at this point, as previously mentioned with the car, I haven't incurred any kind of fees at all this year, short of buying some oil and some filters. So maybe seventy dollars, I think it was, for the replacement of those things. The, the majority of that, the rest of that is all for unit five oh three.
And gas and so on. I'm just thinking, does that go down? Does the vehicle expense drop on an operating side with a new vehicle coming in, given what you just said about the exorbitant expenses to try to keep that thing on the road?
I, I would think that if, if council goes the direction of replacing that unit, then we can look to reduce those operating costs in next year and the year after as we'll have two vehicles then, that are, will both be under warranty, the majority of the costs will be covered, so we'll have the opportunity to offset those costs should we look to replace it.
Okay. So, and just again, to further understand the relationship with SCUGOG, so they pay us a hundred and ninety-two thousand, but the capital purchases remain our responsibility. So we buy the vehicles, take that capital hit, and then SCUGOG just contributes to the operating of it.
Um, that would relate, though, to the animal control vehicle and the replacement, not the bylaw vehicle in this instance, but yes.
Thank you, kind of drifted, yep, thank you. Combine, try to keep them separate, my head didn't work out. Yeah, my mistake, sorry. So the only remaining one then is the animal filter? Unless you wanna look, is there further ahead?
Uh, page sixteen involves the replacement of one of the animal control vans. That's not until 2020. To give you a bit of a history on that vehicle, it was set to be replaced in, as part of the 2018 budget. Uxbridge accounted for that within the budget, so we do have it in reserves. But SCUGOG had not yet put it into their capital, and it wasn't included. This year, we've incurred very, very minimal costs for repairs on that vehicle. And that's why I've pushed it out another year to 2020 to have another look at it. As I believe it's, it's a 2009, but it still has low kilometers, and it's probably the more reliable of the two, even being older. So with myself, you know, I generally get eleven, ten, eleven years out of these vehicles, sometimes even twelve. I'll keep them on the road as long as I think that it's financially worthwhile doing so. So this, at this point, the van's in good shape.
Okay, so that answers my premature question there, thank you. So before we leave capital then, for animal control, there's the issue of the new animal shelter. Again, not something we're gonna solve here, maybe similar to the fire truck issue. Just throwing it out there for anybody else to comment on. What, it's, it's, uh, there's, we know about the story, we know the funds have been raised. It's being identified there to go, uh, so I'm back to page fifteen, catch me if I fall. Four hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars being moved to the, just jump in, it's fine.
So, um, so we have an approved cost of 1.65. Half of that, so what will happen is off of that amount will come the money raised from NOSIS, which I think is in here somewhere. Plus, we have donations sitting in reserves at the township that will go and offset that amount there. And then so we've kinda gone through and cited how we were gonna fund our share. So we have, part of it will be funded by DCs. Uh, we have some reserves because we've been levying the last two or three years. So we have some reserves set aside. And then what we, we'll get a hundred thousand dollars in proceeds from SCUGOG because we own a share in that shelter, so they have to pay us out about a hundred thousand dollars. And then we plan to borrow from future capital projects reserves. And then that would be repaid back to that reserve, about thirty-five thousand over the years, 2021 to 2024.
Debbie?
Mr. Chair, through you to the committee, just for information. I'm hoping to have a report that will come back for consideration, probably in January. I'm just not sure yet what, what meeting it'll land on. We actually had a call, that's why Mayor Dave, myself, and Ingrid had to leave about quarter to twelve with our call regarding the new shelter. So we are still working on it in the background, but I will hopefully have some updates for you in January.
Now, the original bidder upped his price, so then we went to the second bidder? No?
Through you, Mr. Chair, at this point, I, that'll be information that'll come in my report of what we did, where we are, and where we plan to go.
Counselor Hyatt? Just on, on the last line there, I guess through you to Donna, that thirty-five five, is that our share of the repayment? Or is that the total that we're gonna split, play with SCUGOG?
So, um, the funding I just deal, funding I've just dealt with, Uxbridge's share, so that is our share.
That is our share, okay, thanks.
Is there anything on the budget list for either bylaw or animal control? Any other questions, any other questions for Andre on expense, capital? Terrific, all right, thanks, Andre. So back to clerks department.
Page nine.
Which I'm confident is on page nine. Go ahead, Catalina.
Um, just a couple highlights from our budget. Our election, we ended election under budget, which is great. So your figure here is actually not the latest figure. We ended up, the election cost us ninety-five thousand four hundred and fifty-three dollars and seventy-three cents. And but we budgeted it seven, ninety-seven thousand six hundred and forty-six dollars. So it's not that much under budget, but still under budget.
Where's Roger?
Um, yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions, should you have any.
Yeah, we'll probably need a minute just for everybody to have a chance to scan down through that. Unless anybody's got something already, there it is.
Where are we on Marriage is Net? Like, whoa, that's not what I meant. I know you're engaged, no, that's not the joke. So at the end of it, is it a moneymaker for us? It looks like it, 'cause we're, we have fifteen thousand in revenue. And, and we, uh, the expense is thirty-eight?
Yep, and as we discussed in our pre-budget meetings, we are going to be raising the price of the civil ceremonies to two hundred and seventy-five dollars before tax, which will be three hundred and ten dollars. So raising the price a little bit, which will generate some more revenue for us and do some advertising, more advertising on social media about, that we offer civil ceremonies.
Okay, now, most weddings are done on weekends. Are we planning on entering that market?
We'd rather not at this time. But if, just with staff time too on the weekends, it might take away from it being a revenue maker. But perhaps I can bring a report forward to investigate what that would be. Also, too, offering off-site weddings could be a possibility. I know Debbie and I have done a couple off-site weddings once in a while when it's guests that, you know, people have mobility issues, they can't necessarily come to the township. So we have that in the past, and perhaps just maybe not advertising that we do that service. But if we do that service, charging a little bit more. So we, I can investigate if you're open to that.
Well, and even finding, you know, an adder where, where from a township perspective, the revenue's the same. Right? But then the additional revenue maybe go to a staff member that's actually doing the work might, might work. Just that way, we're getting our piece, and someone who wants to get married on a Saturday night and, you know, in Leeksdale has that ability to do that. And then staff would see an additional, you know, extra revenue go to them, if possible.
Counselor Beach?
Thank you. Catalina, office equipment and software. The actual was higher than you estimated, did something go south?
Um, nothing went south. We bought an extra, actually that, we bought an extra laser feature license, so that upped our cost. Now that we have Jennifer working part-time with us in, back there in the clerks area, she needed her own laser feature license, so we did purchase that. Acrobat Pro as well. And also that's part of the office equipment and software. Our magazine subscriptions are in there. And one of the things I wanted to bring up was, we get the Novo Rais Urbis GTHA, is like a planning magazine that Debbie always circulates to members of council. And that is about six hundred dollars a year. And I'm wondering if that's maybe something that we don't pursue this year. So that's up to council, but I'm not sure if everybody's reading it.
A question on that, along with any other magazines that you're getting currently, do they come in electronic form nowadays, where it's a cheaper cost?
That one is electronic, yeah. Great.
Would, uh, just need a motion. Now you're loose with the rules. Good on the sheet.
It'll be my pleasure. Mr. Chair, if I could, just one other note, in the 2018, what Counselor Beach was asking, office supplies and software, that also is the, uh, Azure Re funding. So that's our software that we use for our mapping, so we pay that through the region. So for, it's ten thousand dollars a year, so there's actually two of them in there. So, 'cause we've already paid for 2019. And that'll be transferred out into 2019 budget. But for now, it's showing us over budget, but that's what that is, okay?
Counselor Hyatt?
Through you to Catalina, conferences and conventions, they always budget four thousand a year. Nobody seems to go to these things, so is there a way to reduce that a lot?
So, yeah, I'm happy to reduce that, this isn't the latest numbers. Laura and I did attend a conference this November, so it is closer to almost three thousand now, but I'm happy to lower it. I know, go ahead.
If there's something you forecast that you'll be at, obviously it needs to be in there, but if it's something you think could be reduced, then...
Through you, Mr. Chair, to Counselor Hyatt. So we usually, someone from our department, probably the biggest one is the AMCTO conference. And obviously with the election, there was really no opportunity to go in 2017. But generally, either myself or the, or Catalina will go. So that's why we were a little off on our conferences and that type of thing, was because of the election this year mainly. And then starting in 2017, too, you're starting to ramp up, so. But generally, we do, between education seminars and that kinda thing, we do normally are very close to our spending.
Any other questions on clerks' operating budget? Is there any capitals?
I do wanna point out the abandoned cemeteries, and it's in the operating, page eighty-eight. Uh, that comes out of our clerks department budget, and it is quite high because this year, we completed all of the work on the abandoned cemeteries.
Where are we, Catalina?
Page eighty-eight.
Eight, okay, eight, I see. Me too.
So typically, what comes out of that line item is the grass cutting on the abandoned cemeteries. But in 2016, we began, the township owns four of them, and they were starting to become a safety concern. Headstones sort of off, and so we decided to borrow some money from reserves. So that line item is also borrowing the money that we took from the reserves this year and paying it back. And happy to announce that there's no more work for any of the abandoned cemeteries for hopefully the next fifty years. So that's completed. And then it will go back to being the regular abandoned cemeteries upkeep, sort of the, um, two thousand dollars a year for the grass cutting and whatnot. So that's what, that one's a little high.
The, Catalina?
Over here. Over here. Counselor Rona, go ahead.
The, uh, the Energy Conservation Committee no longer exists, I believe.
Doesn't come from clerks. The other thing that's on here that's clerks is the abandoned cemeteries and the Accessibility Committee. And that one is also, we didn't spend the money in 2018 or 2017, but we will be working on our multi-year accessibility plan this year, and that's why we increased the budget to twenty-nine hundred dollars. Any questions about the election budget? I do wanna put a little seed, plant a little seed for the next election, I know it's very far away. But we do need to realize that if we are going to be doing the election with a different method, that's not vote-by-mail, the increase for that will be quite higher. Finding the different options for the next election, so whether it's gonna be internet and telephone, a hybrid of the two. But just to let you know that having an election to be under a hundred thousand might not be realistic for 2022. So we'll have to budget a bit more if we do decide, if council does decide to go with a different voting method for 2022. Just that's why, I know we're all fatigued from election talk.
Well, pretty amazing effort, considering the extra effort that went in to trying to drive up the participation rate. So with the extra, both online and in print, to do that kind of effort, let alone the staff's effort that went into that, and still come in marginally under budget is a good job, good on you.
Yeah, just to comment on that, I don't know how everyone else feels in the room, but, you know, anytime I had questions on the election, you know, people of my, on my team who did as well, it was always answered quickly, you guys were amazing. Now, you didn't always give me what I wanted, which is frustrating, but, uh, so if you could just change it so you spent the same amount of money and always gave me what I wanted, that would be amazing. But I think we all feel pretty much the same way. You know, we certainly had some issues with, you know, signage being here and there, and we, you know, but those are typical issues. But in terms of communication with, with everyone running, I think you guys were amazing.
Is there a revenue line on there from sign infractions? To bylaw? Was it, was it there? I didn't notice, was it, not there? There's a couple out there, still on Lake Ridge and over towards Cortha. Not ours, you're safe. I did my best to drive the revenue on that side. Any other questions on clerks department operating? Just while it's on my mind and before, because we're talking election-based and the sign-based and whatnot. The bylaw office was obviously involved with the signage aspect. Is their cost reflected within theirs, or reflected in this cost of the election?
So any additional, so overtime that people did, is included in our election budget. But the activities of the bylaw officers patrolling the township, removing signs, that was within their regular activities or workday, that wasn't included in this budget.
For example, then, we would have, we received emails, and then we received formal letters. What, where does that come out of?
Bylaw.
Bylaw.
'Cause they did that within their regular work hours.
Okay, so there might be a change that's required there, it just seems duplicative and a waste of money to send me a letter after the fact when I've already dealt with it. When you've already gotten it, gotten the information once, why do you need it twice? And being paid, and when the town is paying to send it out again.
So, we're gonna have an election wrap-up report in January, where we're gonna discuss the election sign bylaw, all of the changes that occurred. And then that will be a time that we can all have a discussion about what changes we need to make for 2022.
Perfect. Uh, Catalina, I don't think there's anything in capital. So you just got on the budget list, there's nothing in nineteen and in, but in 2020, there's the meeting management software.
Debbie, do you want me to talk about that? So we've had discussions about modernizing the way that we do agendas and minutes, and buying a meeting management software that builds our, it's like an agenda builder. And also, we've had discussions with the mayor about having, revamping the audiovisual in here in order to be more transparent to public, so that people can watch our council meetings more easily. So that's something that we budgeted for in the capital for the future, if that's the direction that council wants to take. But yeah, the way we do agendas right now, it works well. But knowing that there's- Um, but yeah, the way we do agendas right now, it works well, um, but knowing that there's agenda builder software systems out there that we can take advantage of, um, that many municipalities use is always really attractive in ways that we can, um, better, easier, um, and more effective and efficient in the way that we deliver agendas. Um, but there's also ways that Debbie and I have talked about enhancing the systems that we currently use without buying an agenda management sys- system, using Adobe in different ways, and also examining, we have a program Laserfish that we use for our records management. Um, I know that there are functions in it, within Laserfish that perhaps, um, they can like build agendas for us as well. So it's something that Debbie and I are going to investigate more, but it was something that we put in the capital.
Yeah, if I could speak to that. So according to the salesperson who's, who has software, you know, we would have to look at it. But there are, there are programs where basically all the reports would just get dumped into a system with titles throughout, throughout the, the week or month onto which, which agenda it would go into. Um, while they're, with that software, it would save a huge amount of time in terms of scanning, scanning documents and everything else to build these agendas. And then, as they're taking minutes, it's all part of the same program, so instead of having multiple programs, it may make it significantly easier. The other thing that this gentleman mentioned is, one of the issues with our YouTube channel is that if you're interested in, you know, item 12 on the agenda, and there's 50 items, you don't know if item 12 is 40 minutes in or 20 minutes in, there's no way to, to put bookmarks into our, our YouTube channel. With this, with this program, you could then click on item number 14, you could see the report that we read, you could read what the minutes said about that item, and then you could also click on the section of the meeting where we discussed it. Again, it makes it really open and transparent, you could send a link to your, to your residents about that. That's obviously best case scenario if that actually works, but I think we need to look at it. And it, what this gentleman said is it saves about half a, about half an employee in terms of agenda building. So it, it would mean that our Clerk's Department could, could do other things instead of just building agendas.
So the system that we have now, it's important to note that should council decide to move forward with this system, it would be corporate-wide training, because all of the directors and everybody who currently writes their reports would be trained on the system and how to load their reports to the system, so it would be corporate-wide. It wouldn't just affect the Clerk's Department. So that's something important to note, too.
So that's exclusive of the 100K that's, that's allocated here? Like, it's, that 100,000 here for the software is for the software, this training would be incremental to that?
The numbers that were given to me on, on the, on the software, it's a yearly subscription. He told me, I think it was $15,000 a year for that software. Um, the, the cost of upgrading our communications here would be, would be more or could be more. It's, it, it just depends on how, what we want this camera system to, to look at. We could certainly get some very high-tech equipment, I just don't know if it would, it would zoom in on our faces when we spoke and things like that, but I don't know if we need that.
Right.
And most people wouldn't want to see any of us all that close.
Debbie?
Dear Mr. Chair, so one of the, I did have a, a long chat with a municipality that has gone with this type of, um, software. And basically what they, and, and this is kind of why we, we wanted to bookmark it in terms of getting it into the budget, getting in front of you and decide, you know, going forward, and why it's 2020, is it gives us a, some ample opportunity to investigate. Number one, is it what we need to do? Um, are, are, are agendas substantial enough that we need to get into this kind of money? Um, do we need to look at investigating, i.e. our sound system, our camera system, our recording system, to be able to work with the new software, and when it gets onto YouTube or whichever way we decide we're going to get it onto the internet, um, that it's all compatible? Um, so it, it just, it's on here, it's, it's a place mark basically to look at in 2020 if it's something we need to, to enhance what we're already doing. Um, we have, uh, hopefully in the early part of the new year, uh, we'll be able to go and, and visit that municipality, the one in particular that I've been chatting with, and see whether or not even the program that they're using, whether it's worthwhile for us. The one thing they did also mention in their case is they did have to, and they have a relatively new building, was upgrade their sound system, upgrade their cameras. Um, they had to enhance staff in terms of IT for the work that needed to be done in the backend, um, for making the, um, footage available and, or bookmarking it so that people could actually go to it and get what they needed. So those are just some things for consideration that, again, we have to investigate further. We, we're just speculation at this point, so.
Also, you have to think about how many people watch our YouTube meetings, and if it's worth the money. Um, being that we are financially constrained every year, always, um, is it really worth it? I know the YouTube, it's like the most 30 hits a meeting, and half those hits are us.
Think we have our answer. Any other questions on that part of the Clerk's Department? Okay. Township Paul?
Thank you.
Township Paul's not part of this discussion. Okay. Sure, yep. Development Services is next. Sure, um, what page is that? 88? Uh, Todd and I keep hearing 88. Is that like eight? Eighty?
It is 88 this time.
Okay.
That's what we heard last time, it was only eight.
It was 88. She stuttered. Way the back. Green 88.
Okay, so...
From page 88.
What color?
Orange.
Orange. I thought.
Not coral, orange.
Got that. Should have listened to myself. Okay, uh, who's speaking to this?
And Gary, you mentioned that there is no Energy Conservation Committee, and you are right, that money can go. Um, but one thing that needs to change on that list, and we talked about it just briefly in the pre-budget discussions, is energy conservation plan should be 5,000, not 500, and I'll tell you why. Because there is a new requirement, um, from the province as part, part of our energy uploading on an annual basis that we actually have to produce by July of 2019, an energy conservation management plan. And that goes over and about, like every year, we, we, we've been tracking now probably for eight years, we track all our energy bills for every facility, including water. Um, and that gets uploaded to the province on an annual basis. This year, there's a requirement for us to produce an energy management plan. I've already spoke to the consultant that was involved with our ICSD, and I haven't had a chance to connect with them, but I'm thinking it'll be about 5,000. My thought is that I'm going to try to get, get that done along with the township of Brock. Is that on another list on it? Okay, that's fine, but it's just all the energy stuff on this page, right? But if it's on corporate, then it can move to, to there? Let's just double check. No, my understanding, it's just a one-time, and then it, and then from there, it settles down again. Uh... General Products, um, I don't see it there. So it should be, what's that? No, the corporate plan was, um, if council's going to do a strategic plan. Yeah, that's what I, that's where I'm at, on page 88. Oh, okay. That's fine, we can leave it there, but, okay, as long as it's somewhere, okay, it's, it's buried in another account.
Okay.
That's fine. Okay, now you want to do planning?
Um, just before we do, oh, so we need a motion to remove the Energy Conservation Committee? Moved by Mayor Barton, on favor? Carried. Um, also, before we leave that, uh, Donna, you were telling me about on the youth center, would it, it would be separate from the actual expense, but I think it was going on to the budget list they'd asked. The youth center sent a letter just this week to Donna requesting 3,000.
Additional.
Sent to, an additional $3,000.
Yep.
Um, to, specifically about a couple of programs, there was anti-bullying and money management. And some of the discussions that have happened since was, those are both, um, valuable training that these, that people should be introduced to. We suspect that that would be available, one through police and some sort of anti-bullying group that's on that. And there's lots of, uh, banks who I'm sure would be happy to come in and talk to youth about appropriate money management as a youth. So I suspect there wouldn't be much of any additional cost.
Do you want us to advise them of that, and, and not to consider their request? Is that where you're going?
It, it, I think the 3,000 was specifically for those two asks, was it, huh? Or was it?
I think those were just some of the examples of how they wanted to spend the money.
That was my understanding from speaking with Amanda about it. I think they just want to use it for additional programming, and they, they're not completely specific to those two. Perhaps... A piece of correspondence on the next agenda, because it actually came in to you, Debbie, right? Then you gave it to me, then I gave it to Donna.
Well, it could be, quite frankly, it can be included with, uh, budget considerations for 2019. It's on the list.
We, we need to somehow get that piece of correspondence on one of the finance agendas, and then we can at least give it its, yeah. Hmm? That's right. Donna will put it on the, on the agenda.
Excellent. More discussion around $3,000 than we do animal shelter. Yeah, exactly. Put, put the... Okay, let's go to Development Services. Brian has joined us. Get to the, sorry, yeah, just, uh... Yellow 23, I have a football player. Welcome, Brian, we've been having a great time, we're glad you're here. You could just go ahead and launch right into it if you like.
Do you have any specific questions, or with regards to the building, I guess we said the building component?
And maybe if I can distill some of your thunder for a second, because from the pre-budget meetings, just highlight for everybody to see right now, if you look at the total budget, 2019 is 487, total revenue is 437. Just to get a sense of... If only all departments were like this, that's a be a lot easier job. Um, anyway, just, I don't know if you've heard this before?
Yeah, I can throw, uh, probably this council, you may be the ones that are going to need to deal with this. Um, what's going to happen is right now, we're pretty much committed to the end of the sewage allocation. And, um, it really is going to depend on what happens with the region, whether they're going to allow communal servicing for some of the Phase Two properties, it's on the table right now for discussion. But there is a built-out number within the township, and I would say that we're probably about another 1,600 homes, and then we're done. And it, that, that's when you'll start to see the impact here, because all of a sudden you'll have a department, and you're going to have some decisions to make. You're going to always need to have a chief building official, for sure. There's still going to be a lot of applications that are going to be coming from, through the committee of adjustment for, you know, decks or additions or those kind of things. But it, there'll come a point where you won't have new construction, new homes, new, that kind of thing. So it, it's going to dramatically change, the time-wise, I don't know, but it could happen within this term of council where you start to see that decline. And that, Brian's number is high because we, there's still a lot of building permits, but when that changes, it will be dramatically different.
And, and I think next year, residential-wise, we're, we're, we're in pretty good shape because of, uh, some work that's being done presently, uh, through the, uh, planning process, so I think next year will be fine, for sure.
Next year's going to be busy.
Too much about commercial growth, but, uh, residential should be fine.
Councilor Beach?
Thank you. Um, Brian, septic system program. Um, budgeted 25.5, and there's 12.750. Rookie, tell me about that.
So, so you're saying we're budget, uh, sorry, the 25, yeah, 25.5. That's for the, uh, that is for the mandatory septic system inspections that, uh, on, on septic systems with, in the Lake Simcoe Region Conservation Area, within 100 meters of a stream or lake. Um, so Durham Region is doing that for us, and they're charging us $175 per inspection. And, uh, initially, I think it might have been three years ago, um, council had, uh, put that number as far as fees to the, uh, to the occupant or to the owner of the property, so $150. So we are losing roughly $25 per inspection of those, uh, of those septic systems. Uh, I'd like to keep that the same, uh, because inspections have to be done every five years, so we already started the program, so the last, uh, two years, we've inspected, um, almost 50% of them, and at the $150, um, I think it would only be... We can increase, or we may ha, we may have to increase that fee.
Any other questions for Brian on the building page? Probably similar, but Brian, I'll let you speak to planning?
Um, yeah, Ingrid can, I can comment.
Oh, okay.
All right, the budget actually has built into it, the hiring of a, of a planner. And Donna, that starts, actually, that is built in to take place starting at the end of June, right? Yeah. And it's, it's the million-dollar question that we ask ourselves every day, do we need a planner on staff? And we talked about it before when we were doing the, uh, council orientation. Right now, our system works fine. Brian and I are pretty plugged in, and that's why it works. But we use Liz Howson as a planner. But when Brian and I are gone, or at some point in time, if something dramatically changes, the question's going to be whether or not this internal system can manage the work that's being done right now to keep that thing working. The way it works right now for development is development pays for development. Most municipalities may have one, two, or three planners on staff, but there's really no easy way to recover those costs. So the way it works in Uxbridge now is, there's a few of us that sort of stick handle the administration of the applications. They all get farm to Liz. People sign a fee agreement, and basically, they cover all of Liz's costs, all the engineering costs, and all of the legal costs as part of their development application. That way, the general taxpayer is not paying for development in Uxbridge. So your taxes are not paying for somebody else to develop, they pay the full freight of being able to develop. It's a great model, but it does rely on people that understand planning internally that aren't necessarily assigned to it. So at this point, we've got somebody in the, in the budget, starting in June. We're still deciding, but I would keep the money there because it may, may end up needing to happen. Um, if, go ahead, Dave.
So, is there, is there another way to have someone who works for us a, a portion of the time? And this could be an offline discussion, but then we subcontract, like we do Liz, for other portions of the time. So it's, they work for us in this office as a, as a... So it's, they work for us in this office as a, as a, possibly as a contractor. And then, and then when they're not working for us, we sub them out like we do currently. So that we, we wouldn't have to pay the whole pop. Well, like, say we picked, say we picked, um, Gail as our next planner. She works in, in the office for us, you know, directly for us six hours of the day or, or three hours of the day.
Like share, basically, like if we're sharing a planner with somebody else.
Like, but, and we're sharing that planner though with David Sled, but it's a David Sled development and...
Okay. So part, part of it, here's the challenge with, with planning. We have a planner, it's whether it's an internal or external planner, who represents the interests of the township. At no point in time will we want our planner to also be representing a developer who's in a conflict. Because the planner basically performs a peer review on all the applications. So that's why the two are, are separate. If we were to share a planner with another municipality, that would be something we could consider. But it's difficult to share with anybody who's a developer in our community only because somebody can't represent both. And, and that's, that's where, but it is more of a, we can have an offline discussion on that. There's some logistical things where the public are looking for that person who's impartial, right? To make those, those recommendations to council. But it's, I mean, it is something we need to look at before we go down the road and hire a planner, for sure. I'm, in the budget right now, we don't have anything listed for downtown revitalization. Um, except it's on, um, it's on the, on the other budget list. And let's see, we have legal and legal is pretty typical. It, I mean, it's... Budgeted more, so we've reduced that. We have OMB hearings, but OMB hearings will only happen if there's an OMB hearing. Generally speaking, if somebody appeals an OMB or appeals a decision that council has made and council's on the same page as the developer, then what we would ask is that the developer pay the OMB costs. But it's when the township's actually being challenged by a developer, then it's difficult for them to pay for our costs when we're challenging them. So we, we, it's a little bit complicated, but generally speaking, we try to recover OMB costs without having to pay for it ourselves. Community Improvement Plan, we put in thirty thousand dollars. We did, I think we had three applications, Brian, this year. And what we want to do is continue that at five thousand dollars per property. So basically, we matched the funding, but we hope that they put in a lot more, like twenty or thirty or fifty or a hundred thousand, but we make a five thousand dollar contribution. We'd like to put that back out again this year. When it comes to the zoning bylaw review, we're still wrapping up the C-Three. We're still dealing with that whole exercise around, um, servicing capacity for Phase Two. That's another study that's going to be coming back to council probably sometime in February or March. And that basically is being triggered by the Phase Two developers who want to develop and are challenging us right now, saying we feel there's enough sewage capacity for us to go. And our position is that we need to save the sewage capacity for the possibility still in Phase One, that there's still things that need to happen. So that is a review that's actually been requested by the region and we're, we're working on that. There is more money in that zoning bylaw review than we usually spend. We have a bunch of bills still to come in from Liz. But basically, the way I look at this, it's not funded every year. If there's money left over, Donna, we still, we roll it back, right?
Yep. So that, sorry, Ingrid, the zoning bylaw is being funded in part by DCs and the other part through reserves. So even if Ingrid did cut it back, it's not affecting the tax levy.
That's right. And, and the reason we just put the forty in is there's going to be a number of things that will come up at council. One thing that came up that was, like, it's not specifically budgeted for, was when council wanted to look at the accessory buildings. And what was happening, we were getting a lot of applications for accessory buildings going to the committee of adjustment because the size that council, that our zoning bylaw had was rather small. And what we were finding is we're getting all of these committee of adjustment applications. And then the thought was, let's go through a zoning bylaw review to increase the size of those accessory buildings in order to reduce the number of people having to go to the committee of adjustment because it is not something people want to do. The other one that council did as well was looking at the second dwelling units in, in, in housing. And it, so it's allowed everywhere throughout the township. But then they also did another exercise, which was, uh, secondary dwelling unit in an accessory building. That was done this year as well. There's going to be those things that are going to come up that, you know, it's a pot of money that at least it allows you to explore something that may come up this year. Maybe a new opportunity or something that's affected by zoning to allow you to be able to do those kind of things. And it'll all be about the, the priority. Um, what else do we have here? Planning Study Reserve, that's just for future planning studies because we know there's going to be things like official plans and zoning bylaw reviews that are going to be ongoing. Office, is that just an office administration fee, Donna? Or is that just things like overhead? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and again, courier and those type of things. We try to bill almost everything back to whoever's doing the development application. Insurance is just, again, like I said before, it's ten thousand that's put there. If it's not there, it's going to go to somebody else. Staff training at a thousand and then memberships at a thousand. And those would just be planning memberships. Then if you look at our revenues, um, there's a fair amount of revenue that came in. And I think some of the revenue's also been deferred to 2019 because we try to split it. Because the applications can take a long time and they sometimes straddle a couple of years, you try to put the resources based on where you're spending your money. So if you're spending the one year, you'll try and take the majority of the fees and put them in that year. If it looks like most of the work's going to happen in the subsequent year, then what we do is we take the fees and we split it and put more into the following year in order to kind of offset some of the costs when it comes to consulting. So those are, that's planning.
Here, Dave.
Yeah, just a question on the OMB hearings. And I, I think I heard the answer to this. So with the OMB, that's being funded at a, a reserve? Is that correct? Okay. And so the fifty thousand...
Doesn't change, it doesn't affect that.
Okay, it's, it's just available cash flow. Okay, now, the, for this year, the, the forty-one hundred dollars that we've spent, do we replace that? No.
The forty-one hundred, though, I think is part of a, is part of an OMB hearing that we were getting into for thirty-four and thirty-six Brock Street. And, um, we actually went back to LPAT and we're trying to recover it.
Okay, thanks.
Um, Councilor Snucks.
Yeah, just quickly, on the Community Improvement Plan that you had mentioned, the thirty, is that business-based?
Yeah, basically, there's a CIP area on Toronto Street. And there's another one for downtown and it's for anybody that's in the CIP. But what council did is they were actually a lot more specific. And I would recommend probably for the money this year, you do the same. Is that we focused it on the commercial establishments that are on Brock Street. And you can be rather specific in saying that that's what your target is because that's, I think, what your target should continue to be. They're also giving people like a bit of incentive, like there's five thousand dollars at the town's prepared. Rutledge Jewelers was one, Viper Marketing. We did a little bit of a spill-off onto the side streets as well because we knew, we knew Viper was looking.
Yeah, we didn't have that many, we didn't have that many applications.
Yeah, yeah.
I was going to ask about that one as well and just say, um, you know, it's, we've used a third of it lot this past year, this year. I think we, maybe we cap it out. We say we're looking for three at, you know, max at, at ten thousand dollars because five's a drop in the pan. And I think we, we might as well, if we're going to budget for it, we want people to use it. We want the, you know, the improvement.
Now, what if instead we set a maximum of ten? But, but if we have six small ones, we could do that instead. So what if we just keep the budget at thirty? But increase the maximum?
Yeah, I, I think that that makes sense too because each project's going to be a little bit different. So to a maximum of ten, you just, you want people to want to try to make it so that they can benefit and make it look better. So I would agree with that.
Yeah, and, and then we would, we would look at the scale. So if we're to give them ten, then we would hope that they would spend at least fifty or something.
Yeah, and then it's a nice problem to have too because then you'll get business owners looking at the future year and wanting to take part and get in early and, and making a request. So it would be a good use of our dollars.
Makes sense.
Donna?
So, um, the plan that we did back in two thousand and eighteen was, um, we reimbursed up to fifty percent, up to a maximum of five thousand.
Uh, Commissioner Beach, you had a question?
Yes, thank you. Um, downtown revitalization. Oh, okay, thank you.
Okay, um, Willie. Now, we could decide if we want to wait until we have a council meeting where we look at a report or we could say this right now, that, that the, the CIP funding limit be increased to ten? And with the ratio, it'll come out with a staff report? Do you want to do a motion like that or do you want it to come from you?
Yeah, I think, I think it's worthwhile to make that motion.
Okay, go for it.
So we're...
We're going CIP, the thirty thousand CIP, it doesn't change the budget.
Right.
It's just a different way of looking at that number.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, Gordon and I were just talking, it might make sense to have a look at the report on how it's done so to look, look at how it's allocated and then we can probably make an appropriate...
Right, so...
It's just basically fifty percent of what they're, what they're spending.
I think, I think your, your initial thing was you were looking back at what has been spent out of the thirty.
Yes.
So we're not having ten, twenty people putting in applications at this point.
Right.
So if we can up the amount to two or three of them, you might get better use of it.
Exactly. That, that was where I was going, but I also agree with what Gordon's thinking as well, that we should just have a quick peek at it to just make, you know, if it is fifty percent of what they're doing, that wording's a little bit different than how we said it.
I almost think... I think what you need, well, because the pro, here's the part of the challenge with it. Because it's building facade and building improvement is what falls under that. I think staying at the fifty percent is still good, but that there's an option for projects over a certain amount to go up to the ten thousand dollar contribution. And the question then becomes is what is that amount? Because you're going to, you may still get projects where somebody says, I want to put up a two thousand dollar sign and I'd like to get a thousand dollars. And so it's really, that's, I think, what we have to kind of work with is what triggers? Like, I think everything should still be on the table, up to fifty percent. And then maybe if, to, to a project maximum of ten, but it first come, first served is maybe what you'll have to do. Because you don't want to miss out on some of those smaller ones where there's, you know, they have signs that don't comply and, and those kind of things that they may want to fix.
So there's nothing, nothing affecting the budget as how we're going to administer it? Okay, so, there's no need for, Gordon?
Just to add to Ingrid's point, we have a short list of things that, uh, the previous council liked to see. I mean, that can always be changed, but I think there were six items, Ingrid? Ingrid? You remember that list we came up with, desirable characteristics of who would, who would council consider to be worthy of this, this type of money?
I have a report.
Maybe if you can incorporate that into the report so that they...
I have a report that I wrote last year.
But there's a short list that, you know, has historical significance.
Yes. But it is part of the CIP. We can send that back to council. But my suggestion would be is maybe council or maybe Willie would refer this to the coun, councillor in charge of planning, Gord Hyatt and vice chair Pam Beach. And maybe between the three of us, we can have a conversation on it.
They can bring back a report for the new council. Because if you're distinguishing between two applications, if one meets all the criteria, then you can say, well, you deserve it over, or the other application.
So, so a motion to have planning chair, vice chair and staff bring back the report to council with regards to CIP.
Okay. All in favor? Oh, it'll vote. Getting a figure. Yeah, you know, just kept, we're going to in a minute. Council, Commissioner Hyatt?
Uh, through you, I guess, to Donna. Over the, the past few years, we've had money allocated for, um, downtown revitalization that wasn't spent or it's not reflected here. Did that money go into reserve? I think there's about forty-five thousand.
Yeah, that money would be in a reserve.
So it's like the downtown revitalization reserve, is that what it's called?
Um, can't remember what it was called, but...
So it's, it's sitting waiting to be used, in other words. Okay, thank you.
No, there was actually a motion that you made to use money for Win the Space. That budget, you're, yeah, that budget's over now. It wasn't CIP money because it was, uh, downtown revitalization money or somewhere, beautification or something. But anyway, that now, because the year is over, it, that commitment is now gone. But that was the motion you had made to give that money to the BIA.
I thought it was CIP money, but I could be wrong.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe Donna can check into that and see.
Where, it may be CIP, but, but that, now that it hasn't been spent in this calendar year, uh, the BIA may be thinking of doing Win the Space again. The money that they had from us, they didn't use, so they basically would need to make the request again.
We just have to re, re-budget for it.
Is there any capital, Ingrid, related at all? There is. Yeah, so on the, what were you going to call it? The budget list. It's going to be a new jar sitting right in front of you shortly. It's not going to be ten.
One thing we had talked about was doing a downtown revitalization consulting. And I wouldn't say it's a study, but it's fifty thousand dollars that's there to look at a number of things. And I think we should leave that in the budget. As this, as this culvert project progresses, I think it's time to start looking. Todd, you, you and Willie and I have had a conversation about this already. Start looking at what kind of consulting we might want to do to look at Lower Brock Street. And, and getting ourselves ready as opposed to starting to get ready when the project is finished. We need, there's some really quick wins that I think we can make, um, on Lower Brock Street. And it might be good to have some consulting money. If there's anything that's going to change with the road itself, i.e., some parking removed or those kind of things, we need to probably have a consultant that would take a look at that and be able to put something back to the region for consideration. So that's, I would just leave that there for that purpose.
Just on that point, actually, I bumped in yesterday to the, uh, his name escapes me now. He was in here giving us a delegation in the last council, the two traffic people. There was a lady and a gentleman. Anyway, Ramish, is it? Yeah, anyway, Ramish, thank you. And he was quite open to whatever we're proposing. So he said the sooner you can get it to us, the better and then we have a chance to evaluate it. So if we can get going on something, even if it's a small win, as you say, I think it would be a vast improvement over what's there today.
And the, and the other thing as part of this whole thing we can't lose sight of either is that whole active transportation and...
Yeah, and that's part of it too.
Installation of the bike racks and all those things are all part and parcel of this bigger discussion.
Any other questions regarding building or planning?
Um, in building, yeah, I'm sorry. I have, uh, in two thousand and twenty-eight, forty, forty thousand dollars for a, a vehicle.
We'll, uh, we'll get back to you shortly. That may have been the dustblower so far.
All right, for the committee of adjustment budget, you know you have two options when it comes to committee of adjustment. Council has delegated this to a committee, anything that's considered a minor variance. Council could however decide that they have nothing else to do and would like to do committee of adjustment. But I do remind you that committee of adjustment takes a lot of time. You have to visit properties and you have to have a meeting once a month. That's why I think they've delegated it in the past. It's a standalone committee. It's appointed by council, but you've basically delegated the authority of committee of adjustment or minor variances to them. This is the budget for them. The committee members do get paid and the rest is pretty self-explanatory. If you have any questions on that.
And we had some great applicants apply to be on the committee of adjustment this, this time. So I think, uh... Be a really vibrant committee of adjustment.
And one thing we did this year is we actually went out and we were very, very specific on the committee of adjustment this, this time. We went out and asked for people with a background in planning. And I, I think from our perspective, Dave and my perspective, that this was a really good thing to do because we got people that have the skill sets to be amazing members of the committee of adjustment. And that's, not that it hasn't happened before, but it's very difficult when you just see a bunch of names and you're trying to figure out who they are. This way, we were dealing with resumes and we also interviewed every single one of them to come up with the best five.
So that recommendation just be another one of these, in January, we see the recommendations?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you, you'll see, we'll discuss it, who, who the members are and our suggestions.
Anything else? All right, thanks, Brian. Yes, I was just about to say, I'm gonna get, request a motion to take a fifteen minute recess again. I think we just did, uh, vehicle in twenty twenty-eight. Councilor Hyatt suggested that's an expensive bicycle. Okay, I have a motion by Mayor Barton to, to take recess till ten after three, it's just like public school. Uh, all in favor? All right. Still at the end, right? What's that? Oh, yeah? Can hardly wait. Okay, let's get started. What we're gonna do... Gentlemen, which... It's like having two mums in the room. So, I got this one, I got it, so... Okay, so what we're gonna...
Okay, now, so, and if you were, does CA exist today, just a straight CA?
So, I can call myself a CA. So, since it was implemented, I can call myself a CA, CPA, CA for up to ten years, and then I think after the ten years, I can't call myself a CA anymore. I'm a CPA.
Okay, so CA, then what's the difference between CMA and CPA?
So, I mean, there used to be differences.
So, there's no difference, so CMA and CPA is the same thing?
So, CMAs used to be more of a management stream.
Okay.
And CPA, CA used to be more of an accounting.
Okay.
Finance stream.
Now, everyone...
But they all, they all do kind of overlap, and especially now, they all overlap. It's just there were different education requirements and different qualifying requirements.
Okay, so, so right now, CA's, CA won't exist in how many, people will call themselves CAs in how long?
So, if I were to post this job, I'd be looking for a CPA.
Okay.
Anyone who was a CA, is now a CPA.
Is now a CPA.
They're just a CPA.
Okay.
So, their ten-year time is pretty much...
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and then, and then a CMA doesn't exist anymore either?
No, you can't get a CMA anymore, not unless maybe you're grandfathered in, I'm not sure, the grandfathering.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Fair enough, thanks.
Ingrid, just one thing that we kicked around and has probably been lost in the dust was you and I were going to take a look at telephone and communications charges in a broader sense, so, just putting that out there, it just reminded me when I saw it on here, so we should...
We just wanted to try and take a look at our phone plan overall and see if there's some ways to save money. A number of years ago, a company actually came to Oxbridge, they were located in Oxbridge and had talked to our council at the time, that they had found a way through our Bell billing that they could get our bills reduced. And at the time, you basically, you gave them a portion of the savings and council at that time decided not to proceed. They said if there's savings to be found, we can find them. And it, anyway, it just, it... Maybe that's another thing for the new Deputy Treasurer too, to get involved in, right? We should, we have an opportunity to start looking at a lot of those things.
So, that's Bell, you just went with Bell.
Oh, okay, so, okay.
So, just a couple of months ago, we went through an exercise and what we did was, had an offer for long-distance service through Bell Canada at a substantial saving where previously we were at Primus, so that has already happened, so we should start to see some substantial savings in terms of long-distance with Bell.
Any questions for Donna on the Treasury Department?
Donna, would that person look after, you were mentioning contracts, would they be looking after, say, Ben Kester's area at all, or?
So, they would be looking at procurement, purchasing.
Procuring, procurement? So, they would vet anything that, say, contracts that Ben would be letting, or?
We don't have the process completely put in place yet, but we would probably look at changing the process. That's currently being done right now.
Heard it?
Yeah, I think we all realize this is important and probably the savings will outweigh the costs of having this person on staff, because we'll be able to look at some of these, some of these areas where we're probably leaving money on the table. I think the sooner the better for this, this position. That's, I'll make a motion that we move this ahead and with an attempted start date at, say, June first.
All in favor of that motion? Carried. Yeah, so the detail, the details will be, we're just asking here, but she'll calculate the actual cost of that for the salary and benefits to build that into the budget.
Okay. There was a motion, Gary, start June the first instead of September, and that motion was carried.
Any other questions? Okay. Capital on Treasury?
Go back, sorry.
Sure.
Can, IT, can we take a look at where we are with IT? I just, I just met with John Henry, oh, by the way, John Henry says hello, which is the best. That's the message from lunch. But there was an option that he just briefly discussed of getting our IT support from the region. So, again, I think we need to take a look at, at our costs on that. What are we paying at the moment?
So, the, I'd have to get back to you on the exact amount, but the 2019 budget was seventy-one thousand two hundred, and I believe we have entered into a three-year agreement with them, and I believe that was signed back in the fall of 2017.
Ah, so that far.
Yeah. Okay.
It's worth considering, it'd probably take that long, so...
Yeah, we should probably still look at it and look at our options, and again, overlap may not be the worst thing ever if we, if we at least talk to the region and find out what our options are.
Good.
So, yeah, I'll get, I'll add a motion, a motion to have staff look at all options for IT, including the region, for IT support.
Have a question?
Yes.
Question first?
Just...
Oh, sorry, is that a motion, right? Yeah. All in favor? Carried. Okay, go ahead, Counselor Snooks, no, go ahead. Through you to Donna. As with the vehicles, I don't remember the answer, or if we went to that question, are IT as far as computers, laptops, these, are they purchased or leased?
Purchased.
And has there been a look at the lease aspect and maybe that through the region as well, if it's something the region does as opposed to purchasing? The region purchases as well? Oh, I see what you're saying, okay, from that standpoint. So, in, well, I'm just thinking from, from our standpoint of here, all of our IT, computers, these tablets, whatnot, anything that we're supplying, whether it be on a lease where it's flipping over every two years, just based on technology advancements?
If our IT company on a retainer, are we pay as we go?
We're charged monthly, and we are in a contract, so. One thing that I could say is we probably hold and use our computer equipment much longer than you would with a lease.
No, I know, yeah. Absolutely, a lease is like a two-year timeframe where everything's renewed two years, every two years in, and gets updated with the updated software and whatnot automatically.
We cannot get cost.
Is there a motion to ask that?
Yeah, and I think it would be cost versus benefit, right? Because obviously, it's cheaper to keep your equipment forever from a, from an equipment standpoint, but we do.
No, I think we do, like...
Yeah, but, but sometimes you're, you're far better from a productivity standpoint. If, if we have people that are pushing a button, button and are waiting for a response from, from their IT equipment, that's, wages are significantly higher percentage of our cost than equipment. You don't wanna, you don't want expensive people using poor equipment.
Are we getting any, has there been any feedback, are we, are there people who are frustrated with their IT equipment? Other than you?
No, no, and I think it depends. Sometimes there's issues. The, the way our system works is everyone's basically working on a terminal, so there's lots of communication back and forth to the server. Sometimes that's effective, you've, you've worked more in this more than I have, Bruce, but sometimes that makes sense and other times it's a, it slows things down.
Right, I, I don't have a problem if it is slowing people down, if we're, generally that's just feedback that you get in the operation, so if people are finding, oh, my gosh, I can't get my job done because nothing ever responds, then we've got an issue. I'm just thinking whether Counselor Snooks need to make a motion to investigate that or if we're fixing a problem that doesn't exist.
And, and I'm not sure.
Yeah. Well, I would put it to the aspect of the overall budget line again, if we're looking at all the other things that we're doing is leveling out numbers as you go across the board, well, if you have all the same aged equipment, then all of a sudden, you're gonna hit a bump in year twelve, whatever it happens to be, I mean, you can, nothing's gonna last that long in computers. But say six years down the road, you're now replacing everything all at once, because everything's outdated, and out comes the next level of, of software. And one of those, exactly, right? Whereas if you're now leasing and putting everything on, everything is switching over automatically every two years, things are being moved around and moved automatically through the same company, you end up with, yeah, and you're always up to date. Just a thought. So, maybe a motion to have that looked at as a, as a possibility from a budget standpoint of leveling that line across numbers, across the years, as well as opposed to those bumps that we'll hit when, when we have to pour out extra cash, because it's not small cost.
No.
Isn't there something happening this weekend? Tonight?
New server?
An update? Maybe, do we need a motion for that aspect of it to be looked at further too, I don't know?
It, it probably wouldn't hurt, I just, we, we wanna also watch that we're not loading things on too much with our staff, because we don't want them to just check a box and say, oh, yeah, it's all good. We wanna, if we're gonna look at the long-term aspect of what we're doing for, for our computer systems, we wanna make sure we're making educated decisions and, and really thinking about this long-term. We may wanna talk, maybe we should put a note in, let's talk about this in June. So, let's, you know, figure out what we're up to right now, deal with the giant things like colverts and everything else, and then, and then look at efficiencies moving down the line. We don't have to do everything in the first month.
Donna, to your capital? No, it's a good idea. Thanks. It's not, it's not, no.
Sorry, capital, page twenty-two. Okay, so we're going to, the 2019 projects include a server, 2008 and 2008 R2 upgrade, so we need to upgrade to the latest version and January fourteenth, 2020. So, that needs to be done, and we also need to replace the ES, ES X hosts. They were last done in 2014, and the useful life is usually three to four years, so it's time that we update them. And we do need to stay current with this, otherwise we, we do run into problems with things, if we don't keep up to date with current software and do the upgrades, we do run into problems. In 2020, we're going to upgrade to Office 2019. This was last done in 2013, so it's six years old, so this would just be a standard upgrade. Again, the exchange, the mail system, we're gonna do an upgrade, it was last done in 2013. The region purchases as well? Oh, I see what you're saying, okay, from that standpoint. So. Well, I'm just thinking from our standpoint of here, all of our IT, computers, these tablets, whatnot, anything that we're supplying, whether it be on a lease where it's flipping over every two years, just based on technology advancements.
Is there a IT company on a retainer, or we pay as we go?
We're charged monthly. And we are in a contract, so. Um, the one thing that I could say is we probably hold and use our computer equipment much longer than you would with a lease.
No, I know, yeah. Absolutely, a lease is like a two-year timeframe where everything's renewed every two years in. And gets updated with the updated software and whatnot automatically.
We cannot get cost.
Is a motion to ask it that?
Yeah, and I think it would be cost versus benefit, right? Because obviously, it's cheaper to keep your equipment forever, from an equipment standpoint. But, we do.
No, I think we do, like.
Yeah. But, but sometimes you're far better, from a productivity standpoint, if we have people that are pushing a button and are waiting for a response from their IT equipment, that's, wages are significantly higher percentage of our cost than equipment. You don't want, you don't want expensive people using poor equipment.
Are we getting any, has there been any feedback, are we, are there people who are frustrated with their IT equipment? Other than you?
No. No, and I think it depends, sometimes there's issues. The way our system works is everyone's basically working on a terminal. So, there's lots of communication back and forth to the server. Um, sometimes that's effective, you've worked more in this more than I have, Bruce. But, sometimes that makes sense and other times it's a, it slows things down.
Right, I don't have a problem if it is slowing people down. If we're, generally, that's just feedback that you get in the operation. So, if people are finding, oh, my gosh, I can't get my job done because nothing ever responds, then we've got an issue. I'm just thinking whether Counselor Snooks needs to make a motion to investigate that, or if we're fixing a problem that doesn't exist.
And I'm not sure.
Yeah. Well, I would put it to the aspect of the overall budget line, again. If we're looking at all the other things that we're doing is leveling out numbers as you go across the board, well, if you have all the same aged equipment, then all of a sudden, you're going to hit a bump in year twelve, whatever it happens to be. I mean, you can, nothing's going to last that long in computers. But, say, six years down the road, you're now replacing everything all at once, because everything's outdated. And out comes the next level of software. And one of those, exactly, right? Whereas if you're now leasing and putting everything on, everything is switching over automatically every two years, things are being moved around and moved automatically through the same company, you end up with, yeah. And you're always up to date. Just a thought. So, maybe a motion to have that looked at as a possibility. From a budget standpoint, of leveling that line across numbers, across the years, as well as opposed to those bumps that we'll hit when we have to pour out extra cash. Because it's not small cost.
No.
Isn't there something happening this weekend? Tonight?
New server?
An update? Maybe, do we need a motion for that aspect of it to be looked at further too, I don't know?
It probably wouldn't hurt, I just, we want to also watch that we're not loading things on too much with our staff. Because we don't want them to just check a box and say, oh, yeah, it's all good. We want to, if we're going to look at the long-term aspect of what we're doing for our computer systems, we want to make sure we're making educated decisions and really thinking about this long-term. We may want to talk, maybe we should put a note in, let's talk about this in June. So, let's, you know, figure out what we're up to right now, deal with the giant things like culverts and everything else, and then, and then look at efficiencies moving down the line. We don't have to do everything in the first month.
Donna, to your capital? No, it's a good idea. Thanks. It's not, it's not, no.
Sorry, capital, page twenty-two. Okay, so we're going to, the 2019 projects include a server, 2008, and 2008 R2 upgrade. So, we need to upgrade to the latest version and January fourteenth, 2020. So, that needs to be done, and we also need to replace the ESX hosts. They were last done in 2014, and the useful life is usually three to four years. So, it's time that we update them. And we do need to stay current with this, otherwise, we do run into problems with things. If we don't keep up to date with current software and do the upgrades, we do run into problems. In 2020, we're going to upgrade to Office 2019. This was last done in 2013, so it's six years old. So, this would just be a standard upgrade. Again, the exchange, the mail system, we're going to do an upgrade. It was last done in 2013, and it's seven years old, so we are due for an update. If you look at 2021, we're going to replace the Server Room UPS. And we're going to upgrade the SQL Server 2012. Support for that ends in 2022, so that needs to be done. Any questions?
Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, Bruce, you work in this space, don't you? A little bit?
Yeah, I wouldn't say I'm a server ESX specialist, not knowing what ESX stands for. Spelled differently, it's a whole different thing.
Yeah. I just, one of the committees we have in the books that we haven't implemented yet is the Technology Committee. The problem is, when none of us in this room know what, you know, the ESX is. What's that? Or the SQL. So, so we should be, we should be looking for really solid advice. Because, Donna, you're not tech savvy from a computer standpoint, really, are you?
I'm not a computer expert, no.
No. So, I just, we may want to go into the community, because we have those people who live and work in experts. So, let's keep all the stuff in the books and, but let's, I'll make sure I create this committee and get some advice along the way.
No, no question, I think, and it just ties in to Todd's ideas and yours, just to be able to say, maybe it's time for a fresh look at it, say, is there a better way of the entire IT package? Everly.
Because all of this should be grouped into one thing.
Good, isn't it, June? Go ahead, Ingrid.
All I was going to say is, we can certainly go out and get a committee of volunteers from this community. We just need to, you just need to make sure when we go out that you ask the key words of exactly what it is you want to have looked at. There's a lot of people who want to offer some advice. And maybe you say that you're not looking for somebody that's necessarily selling equipment. You're looking for people who have IT. Because you've just got to be careful, they may try to sell you everything, right?
Or use non-salespeople. Yeah, go ahead, Todd.
I think it would be a really good idea to speak to the region IT. Because I think they would probably have a really good understanding of how a municipality actually works. And I think they could provide a lot of insight.
And I don't disagree, and I had that conversation with our new CAO at the, at the region and John Henry about those options, so I agree a hundred percent. I just, there are also, in this community, we have some incredible expertise where people are running pretty large organizations and also small businesses. And we might be able to get some really solid advice for someone of our size. Because what works for Durham Region may not be what we need here.
And there's also a lot of people in this community, I'm sure you heard it when you were out campaigning too, that are looking for a way to plug in and assist on a small project here and there, as opposed to sitting on a committee. They want to give back, right?
Good. Just a quick question through you to Donna, are these just the hardware costs, Donna, or are they the actual installation costs as well for each of these things?
That includes both the cost for the upgrade or the software, plus the installation.
And the hardware? Okay.
Yes.
And or software, whatever. Okay. Uh, do you have anything on the budget list? You'd better not. The treasurer does not have anything on the budget list. Huh. Yeah, what, if everybody's okay with this, how about we do the Township Hall? And, sure?
Yes, thank you, don't let me go without, but is it part of this?
This is going back to page seven, Donna. So, under 2017 natural, under insurance, what was the one hundred and thirty thousand?
That story, the thirty-five thousand?
The one hundred and thirty thousand.
Oh, okay, so that was the credit of one hundred and thirty thousand?
Yeah, but why did we get that much back?
Sorry, so what that would have been, I believe, is in year 2017, we belonged to the Durham Municipal Insurance Pool, and we actually got a return of surplus. And that's what that was. And I believe what we did with that was we put it into the Brock Street Culvert Reserve as a risk mitigation measure, because that's what the funds were to be used for. So, those will be used to fund the Brock Street Culvert project. That's what council decided.
And under capital, is it normally that you come back every six years for an upgrade?
So, it actually varies on what the item is.
But some of it, you said it was six years, something was seven years. Is that normally, for those particular projects that you talked about today?
Yeah, it is normal, they do roll over, and a lot of times.
Every six years?
Yeah, a lot of times, things will expire, or the company will no longer offer support for the hardware.
Six years is a stretch for most of this equipment, whether it be hardware or software.
I was surprised that it wouldn't have been like three or four years.
Well, I'm sure you're right, and.
Okay, so, if you're, just to do a sanity check, we'll do Township Hall. And Gord, you're still good? Okay? So, you got the notice that your train's delayed? I always want to do something when he's not here. Uh, so we've, we'll talk about Township Hall, and then Counselor Snooks has something to finish off with, so. So, we'll do Township Hall first, who speaks to that? You do? Debbie does, okay.
Um, so this is for the operations of Town Hall. And this really, unless anybody has any questions. I don't really have much to offer. Thanks for coming in.
Counselor Beech had the first hand up.
Debbie, furniture and furnishings, you're estimating for this coming year that it's going to be considerably higher.
Yeah, so that will tie into what we wanted to talk about. So, essentially, what's happening is we're, we are out of space here. We don't have additional spaces for people to sit, we're out of desks. With addition of staff that is being proposed for 2019, we will be bumping out some of the staff that are in the administration bullpen. And we don't have anywhere for them to sit. So, what we had got some pricing on last year, or sorry, the beginning of this year, was for the 2018 budget, but didn't really pan out, was to do a space needs study. And what that would look at is basically the entire building, what, how we can better utilize the space we have. Now, you know the history on this building, it used to be a school where the administration area is, and committee, the boardroom. When they moved over here from the other building, it, this area was added on, as was the lobby, and then downstairs eventually was opened up and it became the building department from when they were upstairs originally. As we expand, 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 Public Works and Building Department went downstairs. So, what we're finding now is we've basically reached that wall again, sorry for the pun. And we had Bennett Design come in and give us an estimate. So, originally, they had thought it would be around seventeen thousand to do it. I just recently received an updated quote, and for the Phase One analysis, we're looking at about twenty-four, sorry, twenty-five thousand, for, which is, they're calling project discovery and feasibility planning. And then into Phase Two, conceptual schematic design. And they don't have a pricing on that yet. Basically, one will lead to the other. So, what we're hoping this will do is give us an idea of where we can look at better utilizing space. So, for example, the lobby. It's wide open, it's airy, it's architecturally lovely on a sunny day. But, is it a good use of space? Is there a way we can reconfigure boardrooms and better utilize that space? So, it basically takes a look at, and downstairs, so where, in the bullpen upstairs in the administration area, we have workspaces. Downstairs, they don't really have that, it's just desks and credenzas and drafting tables and a big meeting table. So, looking at that area, is there, well, we could pretty much guarantee there is a better way we can utilize the space down there. So, bringing this company, or a company, in, I'm no expert in terms of best utilizing area. I could pack a suitcase probably like nobody else, but that's probably not going to help us in packing in employees. So, I mean, we know there's better ways that we can use the space in this building. If we were to look at building on, which would be a last-ditch resort, because, again, the configuration of the building, the location with the ravine at the back, we'd have to look at probably going out front. And we know we're nowhere close to being able, or even wanting to do that, because we can better use the space we already have. But, we need somebody to come in, look at what we're doing, how we're doing it. Is there better ways, even in the administration area, that we can utilize the space? Do we, could we use smaller desks, and do we need smaller areas? Going to computers and electronics, can we start to eliminate more paper and not have staff having to keep papers and file cabinets and all that kind of thing? So, that's what the overall study would look at, but again, it's kind of broke down into two phases. But, in answer to your question, Counselor Beech, I'm sorry it took me so long to get here, that would be to buy hopefully some workstations and do some renovations that we can do right up front in order to accommodate the staff. Because this will be a long process in getting through the study. But, short of bringing in a piano stool for some of the staff to sit on, we need to look at things right now, so.
Thank you, I love the explanation.
Oh, no, I'd all like counsel to speak.
As we look at 2019 and the incremental bodies that come in, right now, how many do we not have space for? And understanding that we're looking at the space, but how many people are we having come in that we do not have accommodation for?
So, with the addition of staff, there would be some jostling around of current staff, which would push out the one administration person we have working in that area right now. And then, we have two bylaw officers sharing a desk. And basically, in my department, when we brought in a part-time person, that eliminated my ability to have a student. When we had the election coordinator in, we had a little typing desk that we put into one of the offices. And then eventually, they moved in and took up a boardroom. So, we're basically, from Treasury's perspective, for their overflow workers, that eats up a desk in their area. So, right now, already, we're probably two behind. Give or take? Basically, yes, as of right now. I think we're too short. Am I right, Donna, Ingrid?
In my opinion, we need to reconfigure downstairs. To me, there's a lot of space down there, and it's just, there's too much of every, not everybody needs a drafting table and a credenza, and a, that's the one, even if you had to break it up a little, it would almost be worth it to look at whether we can create another administrative space on the main floor for Colleen, and then do a study to at least look at the lower level. To me, I would rather not get, not have people get too comfortable downstairs, especially if there's a retirement, that's the time to do it. And Brian will probably be retiring in the next year. And that's the time to basically have a plan and go in and say, okay, now we're going to reconfigure it, and we're going to have some extra desks for future.
Would it make sense to put the bylaw people down there?
It may make sense to do that, but again, I think, that's where I think there's potential for additional space. And that, to me, is, that's the, that's the area I'm the most interested in seeing looked at. I think the challenge with looking at boardrooms, sometimes there's, we already, or boardrooms are already at a premium. And that becomes a bit of a difficult thing for us. And then the other space, too, is we've got all the councils working in one office. We have that one office that Jack used to use, Jack Bowler used to use. But, there's the Alzheimer's Society is in there, the IT guys in there two days a week. And now, there's like really not a lot of, lot of time anybody can get into that. And there's going to be councils in the future, too, where people are going to say, you know, I'd like to have a workspace where I can go and I can sit down and I can plug in and log on.
Okay, so, good explanation, Debbie. So, we'll just leave it in there, and then we'll just start to explore what's the most effective way to get that done, to make space for the staff rearrangement, okay? Any other questions? Yeah, sorry, Counselor.
Just to follow up on that, Deb, is this to do the actual design, or is it to do the implementation of the design, or both?
Yeah, so basically, the first phase.
Cubicles or anything else?
No. The first phase is project discovery and feasibility planning. So, it's basically looking at everything, and then.
So, if they say you need, you know, cubicles or whatever, that would be an additional, more involved cost, right?
Yes, absolutely.
I hit the wrong button. I always struggle to pay that kind of money for advice. And I'm not, I'm not, I'm not judging, it's, that's the quote we've received. It just, I struggle with, we're going to charge you twenty-four thousand dollars to tell you then how expensive this is going to cost. And I know proper planning is important, but it seems like a ton of money.
The money's in the budget then to perhaps do the work.
Yeah. Yeah, so let's, let's, let's all of us think about how we manage that, and then we'll talk about it when we come back, like you just said. What's that?
Yeah, okay. Okay. Thanks. It's a nice opportunity. Any other questions for Debbie regarding operating on Township Hall? Oh, the answer, the answer to that's no? That's a, that's a no, that's four years out. Three years, we'll get it done three years. Merry Christmas. Uh, Debbie, did you have any, is there capitals? Okay. Twenty-four?
Deb, didn't we just do our chiller?
Okay, so, yes, we did. But, what Donna's done is financed it over a period of years.
Good, that works, how many more years? Oh, three or four, okay.
So, the one thing I did want to speak to is, we were to purchase our generator in 2018. That didn't happen. Unfortunately, by the time the tendering and all that happened, we were into lame duck council, so it didn't proceed. The second part of that is, it came in about a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars over budget. So, anyway, we didn't do anything with it. Now, I guess it begs the question, council had given direction for us to proceed with the purchase and installation of the generator for Town Hall. But, I haven't done anything with it, as I say, because it had come in so far over budget. So, I guess I'm looking for some direction. Probably at this point, I may have to go back out in early 2019, unless the low bidder would guarantee their price, which I don't know if they would or not. It came in around two hundred and seventy-two thousand, and then we, and we were informed at the eleventh hour from Enbridge that we would have to upgrade our meter and the piping coming in. that we would have to upgrade our meter and the piping coming in, which would be about $30,000. So that's what contributed to it being over budget. So, um, other than some, the engineering is done. Even if I had to go out to tender again, I, I mean, the tender essentially is done. It would be just a, a matter of sending it back out again and I'd have probably another $10,000 in engineering that I'd have to do.
Yeah, I, I, I'm struggling with, with the cost, obviously, and I think we may want to take another look at what our needs, what, what the needs are versus the wants. I know that will run our entire building seamlessly with, without any interruption. I know our chiller uses a huge amount of power. That's the big drain.
Um, well, basically, our entire mechanical system, whether it's, it's our heating boiler system or it's the chiller, but our mechanical system is, is a big draw. And we did get some opinion on this and spoke to our engineer about it, we spoke to the electrician about it, whether or not we could take, because of the phases that are in the building, and just select what we would operate. And they said that would be a horrific decision to make, because it would, with the way the building is configured, it would be very difficult to pick and choose, even from the mechanical system, if you ran, say, the AC only in this area and not the rest, or the heat only in this area and not the rest. It just, or any of the electrical for that matter, it would be very, very difficult and very expensive to reconfigure the building in order to be able to do that. So that's why they had basically suggested and did the tendering on the size that we would require in order to run the building. Part of the problem with this building is you can't open a window. You can't do anything in terms of, and I'm, in early this year, you may recall how hot it got, because our chiller was down. And there was, I think it was, we were about three weeks where we had no air conditioning or basically air, any air movement in the building and it was awful. So, anyway, that's, it's, council will have to decide whether or not they want to proceed or what we do. The whole intention of this being a backup is different than our EOC, which is at the fire hall and they have a generator to operate. All our essentials operate out of this building. Our IT, obviously, which we've discussed at length, our telephone system, basically everything is here. The other thought that we had also as part of our emergency plan is that this would be our communications center and that basically the press and all that kind of thing would be operating out of this building. But the day-to-day operations of the building in an emergency still need to take place and that essentially would happen out of this building. Our phone system, everything operates out of here. That was kind of the, the thought in terms of having the chiller, sorry, the generator added to this building.
Meredith?
Yeah, um, I, I think we need to look again, just on, on ways to manage this. If we, I know we have to keep the building cool, it's heated, obviously, with natural gas. So the, the big, the big draw is the, is the compressors for the chiller and that's a huge, huge, because it's one big main system. I wonder if we would save significant costs by doing localized air conditioning for, for an emergency in, in other spots. So you, as, as an example, I went to a resort between the election and, and being sworn in and it was a, a main room a lot like this and there was a whole bunch of small air conditioners that they would cycle on and off.
My thinking is just that it's, it's one thing when you had the horrible problem in the summer and you didn't have air for a long period of time and that's not the right environment to work in. Backup is for an emergency when there's no power. It's unlikely there would be no power for days and days and days. I mean, you can, you can plan for emergencies, but I'm sure people could work, if you're able to function in here, I'm sure you could work for two days without air, but you don't want to be, we're, we're not going to plan for a three-week blackout. We, we like to think those days are behind us. And, and frankly, even if they're not, I don't, I wouldn't suggest that we plan for a massive east coast blackout. So to your point, I think re- relooking at it is a good idea to see what, what is the best solution. I, and Debbie, to your point, it's, it's not, we have the emergency center, but it still needs to be able to connect and run through here in order to, to manage a broader emergency. So I don't, I don't think we, air conditioning is the biggest issue. So I'm just supporting what you're saying, is that let's take another look at it, see maybe we don't need a whatever thousand dollar solution after all.
Yeah, like, what would happen if we, if we talked to our engineering and said, how many, how many watt generator do we need if we don't plan on cooling the building? So it's everything but cooling, then does that drop the price down to 60,000 or is it 320?
Well, I think our biggest concern is the winter time. The heat, you know, having a, a downtime for a long period of time. But how, how often has it happened here in the past?
You know, I, I think, I think taking another look at it is important. We have the EOC and I know from a fire department's perspective, that's kind of the hub and that's what's important. It's important for the people that are in the EOC, but it's not a place for the public to go. And that's the thing, we have to make sure that we have a place for the public to go. When we had the blackout, we had a lot of people coming to this building. It didn't have any air, we had no lights, we had nothing, but people are coming to Town Hall, because that's where they're expecting to be able to get some help. And we have to maybe ask ourselves, what are the services that we're going to be providing from this building? And then what are those areas in the building that we need to have operational? And it may not be everything, right?
So I don't, from a budget perspective, I don't think there's any discussion at this point to say, we're not going to change anything, leave it there, let's talk about if it's the best way to do it, move from that. Is that fair? Yeah, okay.
How many furnaces do we have in this building?
There's three boilers.
Yeah.
Now truckhouse.
Are they all located in the same area?
Boilers, like, it's fairly low power, isn't it? Deb, it's, it's running our valves and to cycle the hot water through the building. All the big power comes from air conditioning, from what I-
Okay, so let's just, let's just spin that off for further discussion. Um, there may be a better way to do this, is what I'm hearing. So Deb, to continue on, you had, oh, the website, did we do, you didn't do the website? Did you?
I haven't talked about it, no. So this has been a project that's been, well, probably the last two years, we've been on the books in terms of replacement of our current website. Unfortunately, last year was not a good year for doing anything like that. So we're hoping to get on that first thing in January and do a revamp of our website so that it's, uh, mobile friendly and, at which, those kind of things. And obviously, accessibility is, is number one these days, so, um, and our, our website is lacking. We've had it for a long time, it's served us well, but it's, the program has basically come to end of life, so, um, and, you know, a new look, new feel is always a good thing, so.
I'm just quickly looking before we wrap up. Anything on the budget list?
Um, just, oh, sorry, just the, for the clerks, that was the only other thing that I had, so there's nothing for Town Hall proposed.
Okay. Okay, from a budget discussion, I think that's it. Um, I know, I know, but, so the next item then on the agenda is unfinished business and other business. That would be the opportunity. If anybody has anything else, then I'll defer to Councilor Snooks.
Just one thing, I'll just say one thing here, as we go to the next round to kind of close things out, I think we need our department heads to look at our training budget, because we're leaving a lot of dollars in there where it's not being used and I'm not suggesting that we don't use it. But I think as we think about continuous improvement for our staff and putting them into, enabling them to do better in their jobs and, and from a professional development perspective, it might make sense that our, you know, our department heads meet with them and find ways to use up that budget to make us better here. And I think it's an opportunity to, you know, for continuous improvement, if we want to continue, if we want to use those words, to make it better, because if, if we add it up across the board, across all the departments, there's a fair amount of money there and it's kind of just sitting. It's, it's something that we need to consider, I think.
Looking at it too, is maybe we should have a corporate training budget and, and the stuff gets drawn out of that budget based on merit, rather than every department carrying their own budget. So people can say, you know, I want to go to this conference or I want to go to that conference, then it becomes about a justification on why you need to go to it and being able to say, the money is better spent doing this. I'm happy to look at that as an option, to roll, take all of the training budget out and put it all into, into an account that I would manage and then I can decide based on feedback from the department heads where that money is best spent. Because you're right, it does, it, it gets lost being in so many different places.
Yeah. Yeah. Make a motion. Yeah, I, I like the, the point and the possible solution. So I'm going to make a motion that we move training out of the individual departments and into one corporate, one corporate account, so that-
To be administered by the CAO.
And-
And departments, yeah.
And Ingrid said it best, but it, it's a way that, I think it's a way that we, we can really concentrate on the departments that need some assistance, so I think it's a good one.
And it may be, and it may be that some departments in some cases are not going to conferences, because the money is needed to be spent in another area. That, you know, it's based on the needs of the, of the corporation as a whole, rather than the needs of individual departments. Because sometimes some departments, at some point in time, are going to need more money than others and that's just going to be the cost of doing business.
Is there a need to consult with the business department heads before we do that?
I would roll it, I would roll it in, in its amount right now and not lose track of where that money has come from, but just put it all into one account with sort of the subsections underneath it. And then what we'll do in January is we'll start having a discussion about what's absolutely critical. Like some, some conferences and stuff like that may not be critical, because we have some bigger things on our agenda.
As we look right now, when we see $2,000 on here, we want to cut it out immediately. So that might be part of it, is, is we lump it all together, we go back to the, the heads and, you know, we see where they're using it, to your point, where it is a necessity. And if we don't need it, if it's just a nice to have for the year, we pull it out.
Right. And then the, the other thing that that could allow our staff to do is, say we, we find that customer service is an issue right across the board, we bring in one speaker to train all staff, you know, in one spot, and we might get better efficiencies with that as well.
And it also can tie us into that continuous improvement, or if we decide to go and lean Six Sigma, then we can just take the funds from that and just say, there's no conferences for the next year, all of our resources are going into that one thing. That works for me.
Okay, Councilor Snooks.
Thank you. Thank you. End of the day and my voice is already gone.
It's the big tough cop.
The tough cop, exactly. All right. Just as a little bit of a background for those that weren't able to get as, as much information on this, but, uh, the, there are two buildings in my ward, and that's why this sort of falls to me, but in my ward, at Rail, Railway Street and Brock, you have the two red barns, one in behind the other, right beside HH Good Feed co-op there. Both those buildings, both myself and Ingrid, over the last little while, had noticed, and just in passing, that, man, they look like they're going to fall down type thing any day. So anyway, there has been a, an engineer has, has done up a, a company has been hired and done a, a look at them. They are both in poor condition. What we are first, and there's two things that we're looking for, is one is to, a budget preapproval today to add in for these built, first for the, the building that we're going to save, being the bigger one at the front, up front on Brock Street there. It is repairable, it just has to be done. And the second part of that is, because of the engineering report, Ingrid as the CAO is not comfortable with that building being occupied until it's fixed. So there has been lengthy conversations back and forth with John Taylor, who speak, who owns HH Good and rents those buildings from us. They're actually, they're on our property, town property. The thaw process at this point is to repair the, to repair the larger of the two, to remove the smaller of the two. And that would in, in essence, open up extra parking space that we could allot along that spot where there already is parking going towards the, the train station. So down the road, that could be something we look at. So for today, we have a rough estimate of the cost that it would be to fix the, the one barn and that, we're going to put that in and around the $20,000 mark, which is topside, definitely topside. From a standpoint of, we can have somebody in there as of January, and that would be the Mennonites, who actually would be the ones who had probably originally built the, those types of barns and whatnot. So they have a specialty, a, a knowledge base that most people wouldn't have on that work. So it wouldn't go out to tender, it would be very specific work based on the timelines of one, occupying it again and making it safe. Not yet.
When you're ready.
Because I may answer it before you're finished. The, the scope of the, the tender, if you had to put it out to tender, we're estimating you'd probably come back with a company saying around $50,000 to fix this. The Mennonites work extremely efficient, they know their business, they do it well. We will have them in touch with the engineer who did the initial, what's the word for it? Assessment of it, which they'll be in contact with them, we'll make sure that obviously an engineer has to stamp off on, on their work as well, so all that has to go into play. But we're looking for now, right now, is that pre-a budget, preapproval budget for the $20,000 to have that work done. He is willing to vacate and be out by January, the first week of January, anything that he doesn't require in the building to be out. And that would, we would lock the, lock the doors type thing, from a safety and insurance standpoint. And then going forward, have the Mennonites in as soon as the, they're able to do that work with the thaw type thing.
Just, I can just add a few more thoughts or a few more comments to it. The Mennonites have actually looked at the building and it is something they can fix. And as Todd mentioned, that we're going to try to have the engineer and the Mennonites interface, but they have actually seen the report and they're aware of what, what needs to be done. John Taylor, who is the occupant of the building, uses it, there's a mill inside that building, so he has a little bit of mill work to do the first week of January, but he knows that we need him out. He's going to remove as much stuff as he can and then relocate it somewhere else and he's got a bunch of little spaces all over that property that he can move stuff to. So he's very much aware of our concern and he's agreed, well, agreed, basically, he knows he's, he's got, he's got to agree. The other part of it is, in our, eight to 11,000 dollars is the cost, but we're adding the engineering to it. He's prepared, over time, to be able to pay that money back. What we had talked about was paying it back during the four-year term of this council, but if it ends up being in the $20,000 mark, then I think there has to be some consideration given to extending it maybe beyond the four years, maybe it becomes six or eight years. But that's something that we can work out and until we have a number that we can pin down, it's hard to say. And as you heard, we need approval today so that we can go back to the Mennonites and try to get them scheduled to get this work done in early January. And the second building, we're going to double check that it's locked and we're going to basically knock it down in the spring. But right now, there's no other way for him to be able to use that building unless it's repaired, but yet the building is critical to his operation and that, it's a bit of a, a challenge, right?
Does he rent all three of the buildings?
He owns the one, the main one.
And he's going to tear that down?
No, no. He owns the building where you go in and buy stuff.
Right.
We own the property and the two barns on the right-hand side of that. We own the property and the two barns on the right-hand side of that.
There used to be three barns. We took one down. And now, we're going to take another one down and there'll be one left. And that's the one that he rents.
He still uses the land where the other barn was taken down?
No, that's, that land we've turned into a parking lot. And what we'll do is when we take the next building down, we'll just pave it and add more parking.
How much more does that cost? What is additional cost for that paving to extend that parking lot beside the...
That is, um, money that we are putting, that's in the budget. I, is it not, not on the list? It's on the budget list. But given some recent developments with discussions that we've been having with Durham region, we're going to take that building down for sure, the north building. And we're going to have to obviously do something or we're going to have another hole in the ground. And we know how we feel about that.
Takes a long time to fill them up.
Just one question on the, on the Mennonites.
You guys just wait, okay? Anyways, Counselor Snooks said that the Mennonites would be doing the building in January. No, it's going to be February when they'd be booked because that's the first, uh, place that they're available to begin with the work.
From my discussion with John Taylor today, he wanted to call them today. And he said that he's going to see if they might even be able to start right after Christmas.
Counselor Pop, did you have a comment?
Just procurement-related, uh, request for tender. Are we violating by... I, I know that we said that there's no chance that anybody can meet this cost, but...
Right now, I mean, within our procurement bylaw, we have an option to be able to deal with things that are emergency in nature. And, and, and that's going to be the provision under which we're going to do that work.
So, we can single-source items like this that are emergencies.
So, the other thing, what, the other question I had is, so, we're allowing him to pay back year over year to us. Um, my thought was on it, and I know it's probably outside of the area, but with our CIP and we're not, we're not going any, we're not using it anywhere near to its max right now, do we give him a little chunk of change to help him along because that five thousand bucks or something to...
Hold on.
I believe it is in the CIP area. I think the CIP area goes up to Cedar Street.
We, we could, I, I would rather revitalize the downtown with that. And, and with this is, I think we're still being very fair. He seemed very open to it. So, I don't think we should add any more funding to this.
Okay, the only reason I bring it up because it might be a look what we did and somebody used our fund. It's just another one...
Okay, thanks, Willie.
So, to finance this twenty thousand dollars, uh, we'll have to get a motion for where that money comes from. So, it could be borrowed from reserve and then paid back as the business owner repays the whatever thousand per year that turns out to be. So, you just have to address where that twenty thousand is coming from.
And I would pass that back to the Chair of Finance and, and his left ear. If, if you could tell us the appropriate place for that to come from, that would be fantastic.
She just did. I didn't make that up on my own. So, we'll need, I guess it's, even though Counselor Snooks brought it up, so I'll need somebody to make a motion to borrow twenty thousand dollars from reserves to be paid back by the owner.
Over the next six years or so.
Over the next, um... Four, four-plus years dependent on the total, total debt.
Debbie, are we going to, are we going to enter into an agreement for that, Debbie?
Oh, yeah.
On that, we're going, we're going to have to, maybe Todd and I will sit down with John and just have a conversation. Um, he, all he was envisioning was that he would be paying for the cost of construction. It's really on our end that we're wanting that engineer to be signing off on it. That may be something that he's just going to say, you know, "Are you okay with me just paying for the cost of the construction?" So, that'll have to be a discussion. But either way, we have to get it done. And that will be part of the negotiations. And maybe that's, that's where I'm saying, if it ends up that, that extra money for the engineer to oversee it pushes it, then we maybe have to be prepared to push it, the payback period to be a little bit longer.
So, we'll, we'll need a contract.
We'll need a contract.
So, we have somebody who can put a contract. And before we start the work, before the Mennonites come in, there needs to be a contract.
We can do a contract. Um, yeah, maybe I can work on that next week.
So, then I would put that motion forward that, uh, we approve the, to twenty thousand dollars? To borrow twenty thousand from reserves to be paid back.
And you're asking for pre-approval to go ahead and do it before the budget is...
Yes, that's right. So, we've got to get the wording right. So, may need a little help here, Deb. So, we're, get the wording right. So, motion is to get pre-approval to borrow twenty thousand dollars from reserves for purposes of repairs of that facility. You can name the facility. To be paid back according to the contract terms. It'll be put together by... And a single source of, due to emergencies, there, comes sense.
And just to be clear, he's, from a building's perspective, permits and everything, he's still going to cover all that. We're not giving him extra that way.
You don't need permit, oh, right.
They're not going to need permits?
Well, we need a, yeah, a permit, yeah, that he's paying for.
Our challenge is going to be like, in the next two weeks, we're probably not going to get a lot done. Um, we're going to really have to get back at this in January.
Yeah, I mean, we're doing the right thing. We're doing the right thing. Just, but, but we need to just, let's be careful. Even though it's a very small dollar thing, we just don't want to trip here somewhere. Um, the other thing I think we should be able to, I would suggest we have Colleen write something that goes to the paper and say, "This is happening." To show it as, all of us talked about the importance of supporting local business. This is clearly supporting local business. Because we don't do this, the option is to take it down and perhaps drive them out of business. So, I'm just thinking there's a, an opportunity to say, "Here's a, a early example of beautifying and..." You know, let her do the wordsmithing, but to be able to say, "Demonstration, think. Tell me what about my building I could use twenty..." Yeah, that we own, yeah.
Yeah, I agree with you a hundred percent. It's, this is an example of thinking outside the box, not going through the typical, you know, bureaucratic process, looking at a, a local specialist to fix something, to keep one of our local agro-businesses going. And ensure that it meets all the, the, the timelines.
Safety, insurance.
All that stuff. Okay?
So, just asked today, I'm not sure if we need a motion for that, but I just asked that, um, our communications specialist craft something of, some kind of a press release to, to, um, explain to the public exactly what we're doing.
Yeah.
To that point, I think similar to what Ingrid was saying, a lot of the local media are shutting down for two weeks. Like, the times are still open, but I think...
At least we told them. Do you think that should go out though prior to the contract or as soon as the contract's signed? Once the contract's signed.
And, and maybe, maybe a week before the project starts. It's always good to communicate something.
Before.
And then it happens. Like, just before. You do it too early, everyone forgets about it.
Wild card, and it's just going to be whether the engineers are available at the time. That's going to be the only, is it, I would go back to Tacoma. I wouldn't want to hire a different engineer for it, yeah.
Okay. Oh, just one sec. Just need a vote on that motion, on Todd's motion. All in favor?
This might be a dumb question, and it probably is. But if the township owns those buildings that you've just been discussing and the land, then I don't understand why is the renter having to pay the charges back?
So, he pays rent right now for the use of that building. The thought is, there's really, uh, there's really no reason for us to fix that building, except to help him. Like, if you were to ask us, if there was nobody in it right now, we would tear the building down.
Oh, okay.
Absolutely. But, but the thing is, it's important to his operation. And I think that's where council's saying, maybe we should fix it and find a way for him to pay that back so that he can continue to have that building for his use. That's really...
Well, I'm not saying that you shouldn't be doing this. I was just trying to, I just sit in there just thinking, "Why?" Um, because usually, the owner pays for the structural things. Um, and that's why I couldn't understand, if he's renting the place, then why does he have to come back over the next four to eight years to pay the township back? That was all. And...
Can I, can I answer that quickly? Yeah. Um, it would be a better financial decision. We'd get a better return on investment to tear it down. We're, we're, we're thinking outside the box again to ensure that he has space to effectively run his business.
No, I understand what, what Ingrid just said. That if, if he wasn't renting the place and no one was renting it, you'd be tearing it down where we have a bigger parking lot. But, um...
Maybe, maybe I'll give you a different way to look at it. Gail Willey here. Um, say, we're renting a space and it was currently a restaurant. And now, somebody wants it to be a shoe store. We wouldn't pay for them inside to do all the changes inside to it? The difference is that this is, he's putting the building back together so that he can continue to work in the same space, if that makes sense. Do you know what I mean?
Wouldn't that be considered leasehold improvements?
Oh, okay, okay. So, you, roughly, how long is that building? And I know you won't help exat... But when, when these men, I start working, how long roughly are they thinking that it might take? Four months?
Yeah, I mean, they work quickly. They're, they're like machines. Um, and it would be within a two-week timeframe.
Oh, two weeks?
Yeah.
Then what was four or...
Well, they gave us three to four days. We always extend that. But, so, but, yeah, they, they come in, they do their thing, they know what they're doing, and, and they complete it. It may, I would, I would say we extend it to the two-weeks timeframe based on the fact that maybe there's something more in that engineering report that they have to do that they haven't thought of. That's all.
So, basi, so basically, um, Ingrid will have time for the next two weeks to enjoy her Christmas break from next week? You said that you'll be writing up next week, but you're supposed to be closed.
So, let me tell you, um, just for council, I did find the engineering report in regards to where this is going. They did provide a phase-two costing for them to look at the south building, um, from an engineering perspective, which was basically to do the analysis to make sure that the work has been done properly, preparation of the repair details and scope. And then the fee for the inspection is seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Now, the bigger question's going to be whether or not they're going to be comfortable enough to come in and inspect something that doesn't follow their specifications. That could be, that's going to be the wrinkle in, in it, just so you're aware.
Is there any other business? Then if I could get a motion to adjourn, Counselor Gary Rirona. All in favor? Merry Christmas to all and to all...
A good night.